Yeah, I am, alright. Go ahead and call me to order Henderson City Council meeting Wednesday, January sixth, seven P M. Alright, we will start with the vote of offices. I go first?
You.
Alright, I can go first, that's fine.
I solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, to discharge faithfully the duties of the office of mayor of the city of Henderson, Minnesota. To the best of my abilities and judgment, so help me God.
Woo!
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
I solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, to discharge faithfully the office of city council of the city of Henderson, Minnesota. To the best of my judgment and ability, so help me God.
I solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, and to discharge faithfully the duties of the office of city council of the city of Henderson, Minnesota. To the best of my judgment and ability, so help me God.
Alright, now that we are all duly sworn in, be looking for motion on the minutes.
No move.
You got a motion again in a second. Motion second, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, alright. Police chief, come along up.
There's, this is also, um, it's gonna get some fire here. When there was some alcohol in here, I, um, have, uh, been reported. For our law enforcement statements, the Chief Henderson. Safe place, the legal order, visit, where's the town? In twenty twenty, we handled one thousand twelve calls for service, which is my updated full call service one. August and September, it was the easiest time, I did ten calls for service, not eight calls, it was completely. And I tried to adopt a little kind of control here. Systemic calls, assault fights, threats of violence. Free harassment, evocation, one death investigation, seven burglaries, eighteen thefts. Two false reporting crimes, seven, uh, were practically deleted. Uh, one arrest warrants, one school related, eight child protection, adult protection cases. One juvenile related, si- six scams, um, ten property damage. Five traffic accident reports. Eleven noise complaints, forty nine suspicious activity complaints. Uh, we did hundred and four traffic stops, um. Seventeen driving complaints filed by direct traffic enforcement. Eleven animal complaints, the parking violation. Ninety nine assist other agencies, nine civil matters. Fourteen alarms, open doors, and ninety one hand calls, one missing person. Uh, three hundred and eighteen community police and directed patrol. And sixty three public assistance welfare checks and sixteen ordinance violations. Four criminal trespasses and the rest of the calls, information on found property and such revenue checks. In the year, uh, twenty twenty, Harrison Police Department made thirty six arrests. You should want citation for ordinance violation, uh, twenty free traffic citations for rare traffic violations. Almost, uh, I guess notable cases, uh, included disclarating downtown burglaries, advantage property. Several businesses that we had, uh. Clearing residential burglary, uh, by arrest. We shot down drug operations on Third Street, executed search warrant, then arrested multiple subjects on various drug charges, burglary charges, and other charges. Uh, made arrest, uh, in downtown on a false bomb threat. We overall made seven drug released arrests and, uh, in addition to our first degree possession of methamphetamine, uh, that was in collaboration with the regional drug task force. In twenty twenty, uh, Silicon Valley Dispatch, uh, was holding thirty three calls for service, now dispatch and sheriff's orders. And it all amounted to almost five thousand savings, four thousand nine hundred fifty dollars, to be exact. Sheriff's officers charging hundred and fifty dollars each time they go out and handle a call in the city of Harrison. We had some changes in personnel, uh, uh, Officer Jesse Dolls, who was part-time, accepted a full-time position within another agency. And he won't be eligible to return part-time without until his, uh, probation is over with an agency. Uh, other than that, uh, you know, we acquired one full-time officer, Alex Schmidt. Uh, we still have Sean Mahaney and Greg Low as part-time, uh, part-time officers. Actually, Sean accepted also a full-time position, his kind of availability is very limited. Currently, we're in the process of hiring, uh, part-time to cover holidays, vacations, waiting six days, et cetera. I made a conditional offer to the most qualified candidate here, actually, who's local, from, from Houston, has experience. In twenty twenty, we conducted all mandatory and completed all mandatory post-training. What I did, I signed up, uh, the department for online courses, which, uh. Pretty convenient as far as cost efficient, some costs of fifty, ninety dollars for an officer to, uh, finish all mandatory training. Uh, usually, if you send somebody to class, uh, one course costs between two hundred and three hundred dollars. And for ninety dollars, we actually included all the courses, the black courses, and this is, uh, twenty-three year training course for mandatory. For, um, to be, uh, more certified. Officer Low attended another far around instructor course and now can qualify, now we can hold our office, so that's a far around thing we carry. So we don't have to rely on outside agency to qualify us. Officers received training in the new crime staff reporting system, I'll talk about it later, but, uh, we completed training and that. When I got here, I quickly found out that the department didn't have any necessary equipment or supplies to conduct investigations and just. Operate in general, so evidence, evidence packaging was acquired, narcotics identification kits, digital voice recorder for taking statements. Taser holster was broken, so we went to get another one, we got extra taser cartridge that was free. Uh, there was no police patches, so we had to give those. Everybody in the department was issued police I D cards. We replaced, uh, broken flip phone with another smartphone, uh. And, uh, this squad and office computer software was upgraded to the department operational needs and did not have enough memory to operate. In the beginning of the year, uh, our prior police unit had eight thousand nine hundred eighty-two miles. And then, uh, twenty-one, three ninety-one, so it ran, uh, twelve thousand four hundred nine miles. With all changes as needed, and the backup units, we have, uh. Eighty thousand mile, miles roughly on it right now, and ran for three thousand two hundred eighty-four miles. I would like to point out that we still have outdated police radios, that we're pretty much, our agencies go to, uh, new, uh, generation of radios, but they're operating fine, I don't see the need to purchase them as of right now, uh. Our squad computer is also outdated, uh, we had some issues. Actually, recently with our memory card, which we will have to replace or whatever, but, uh, you know, as long as it works, we not probably can continue using that. Doesn't really make that much of a difference. At some point, I don't know if it's gonna be next year, or we'll have to replace those, because those are really, I mean, uh. The computer is probably, uh, I don't know. Five years ago, I know they, they replaced those style computers with their air cards, or even more older than that, I think it's about ten years old. So that computer has to be about ten years old, so. This, uh, this was a very unusual year, you know, with the global pandemic and everything else, uh, we, um. Department, uh, was constantly in contact with the Silicon Valley City Emergency Managers, other law enforcement agencies. We, um, acquired and distributed all of the personal protection equipment to everybody on the department. Um, we didn't really have any, uh, serious issues with certain, uh, you know, downed associated with the pandemic. Post-D C A requirements. When I got here, I quickly found out there was no, uh. Policy manual to speak of, uh, so I had to create, uh, new department's policy manual, which is right now we have to park all of the D C A requirements. Uh, there's been some changes, new mandatory changes in the use of force policy, I made those changes. Uh, to comply with the new Minnesota border requirements, as well as. Policy, it's already done. And, uh, we transitioned to a new FBI post-mandated crime reporting system. Uh, it's been a process of several months, and we're utilizing it right now, so. Now going to the budget. There's numbers in front of me. Overall, the budget looks good. The first, um. In the first category with the police budget, we were, uh. That, uh, that included, uh. Operational supplies, employee maintenance, communication, telephone, users' subscriptions, training, small tools. We were nine hundred eleven dollars under the budget. Uh, the second category was police administration. I mean, there are some categories that we slightly over, there are some categories that we, uh. Below the budget, so we won't, you know, that, that first category, we actually were nine hundred eleven dollars under the budget. Uh, the second one was administration, that's wages, that's for, it's office supplies, insurance, so, so forth. We were six thousand, uh, six hundred sixty-nine over the budget, uh, however. That was accounted most, uh, that was all the, the salaries, and, uh, it was covered by the, um. Covid aid, we received eight thousand dollars in covid aid, which we specifically, we knew we're gonna use for extra coverage during that period of time for, um. I'm looking at, I'm looking at their breakdown, and that's what it was, six thousand, that was all the wages, basically. Because we do, we did have some extra coverage. What else, uh, uh, in addition to, uh. That we received, uh, two hundred eighty-seven dollar donation from Rowan Committee to assist with the extra coverage caused during unofficial roll-ins. And, uh, the third category, uh, which is, uh, basically, police vehicles expenses. We were six hundred forty-four under the budget. A lot of, um, because I had to basically buy all of the supplies, I anticipated there'll be less, uh, money spent on supplies. I, as I said, I had to buy all the evidence supplies and everything else here, so. Uh, that was, uh, one of the categories where I went a little over, but overall, as I said, that's, uh, pretty good, um. The city received eleven thousand twenty-six thousand twenty-one cents in, uh, police state aid. Uh, we received eighteen hundred eighty-one and eighty, uh, dollars and eighty-two cents in training reimbursement expenses. Two thousand six hundred twenty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents, uh, in refunds, restitution, and court fines. So the total amount of state police aid without the funds received by the city was fifteen thousand five hundred thirty-five dollars and twenty-eight cents. And again, this is all in addition to almost five thousand dollars that we saved. By handling a hundred percent of the calls coming out of the, uh, I was, I was. I completed, uh, application for, for Henderson Police Department to be certified and eligible for federal grants. I will see what kind of grants they have available, but we were approved by Minnesota Police Department, and all the requirements. So, uh, to be eligible to receive any, any type of federal grants, I guess, would, uh, yeah. Other just general events that, um, happened, uh, that were associated with the police department. On February first, we had meet the chief, uh, event at the city hall, uh, all members, um, of the community. Had the opportunity to come, come here, meet me, meet, uh, all the other members of the police department, interact, ask questions. Um, I did interview with, uh, Tom Tom Radio. Sure, we played radio station and received very, uh, positive reviews about that, um. We, uh. Friends of Russia Dance was held in Henderson, here, there was a lot of people in town, but no incidents. And we addressed all the issues during unofficial roll-ins. We assigned, uh. Officer just to handle that event, uh, so as I said, uh, there were some, in the beginning, issues and concerns expressed, we, we handled them. The final draft of their rental ordinance, uh, was approved by the city attorney and will be resubmitted. We submitted it before and, uh, we're planning on resubmitting it. Um, the department was aggressively enforcing all of their seat nuisance ordinances, uh, you know, putting, um. All of their, um. Deal with all of the blood and, you know, other issues that we had, um. Another, uh, thing that we're planning on doing is, um, putting video surveillance cameras downtown on Main Street. So we received all the quotes, and I would like to thank Rowan Committee for, uh, donated five hundred dollars towards the cost of those cameras. The Lions Club also, um, pledged some money, so they'll, uh, you know, unfortunately, uh. They didn't get a chance to meet, but, uh, I already submitted some, some of those, uh, quotes to them, so we'll probably get something from them. I guess the biggest achievement, uh, during this time was, uh, creating another full-time position, uh, which was approved by majority of the council. And, uh, as the result, uh, the police coverage increased for the city. We have fast response times, as I said, we handle hundred percent of the calls, um, here in the city. It gives us opportunity to do more proactive policing, um, and, uh, obviously increases quality of police services for the community. For the first time in recent years, as I said, we handle hundred percent of the calls, um, and, uh. Not only, uh, you know, saves the city thousands of dollars, it's just the better quality of policing overall. As I said in the beginning, my, uh, my approach is holistic approach, uh, it's proactive, it's, uh, better be on the front end to prevent crime from occurring, rather than dealing with it afterwards, and we will deal, uh, with it anyway, you know, if something, uh. Happens, but, uh, you know, it's always better to, um, use proactive approach, and, uh. Those are, uh, those are things that I'm trying to introduce to the city council and implement to help us with, uh, reducing crime and fighting the crime in town and keeping everybody safe. I think this is it, if you have any questions.
Any, uh, questions for the police chief?
I have one.
Sure.
So the squad car put on a thousand miles. That's three, thirty-three miles a day out of thirty-one days in a month. Two full-time officers, sixteen hours a day patrol. That's two miles driven per hour of time. The miles in town is roughly ten to fifteen, depending if you do all of city limits or.
So we have, yes, we have. It would be probably a thousand, thousand miles, a little over a thousand miles. On the median, then you have three thousand miles on the average.
That was pretty easy to go back and forth to see.
Uh. I basically only, it was only like for, for a couple of months, because I moved here in, uh.
Well, I'm just saying, for the.
So sometimes I do use that vehicle too, you know.
That's.
Like, it's, it doesn't use as much.
Pretty low.
But I, yeah, but I do use it.
For patrol hours.
So I guess what you're stressing?
Well, the distance of town is ten to fifteen miles, so if you patrolled every street in town, that's only twice per sixteen-hour shift per day. That you're patrolling the streets in town, according to the mileage on the main squad. For the year.
I would say we patrol more than twice.
Well, you have mileage on.
So it's, uh, you know, we're trying to, as I said, do it every hour. However, you know, if we tied up with something with investigation or something like that, you know, with work, we're just, you know. Downed or something, you know, it's, uh, you know, we'd be obviously.
Well, I'm trying to do math, but according to the mileage on your report, that's what it comes out to.
Well, it would be, uh.
So ju- I, just for clear, so what, this question is leading somewhere, what are you, what are you trying to ask or trying to tell?
Well, I'm just saying, for patrol hours for two full-time officers, the main squad was driven a thousand miles in one year. So that's thirty days in one month.
Yeah.
That's thirty-three miles a day.
Yeah.
If you drive every street in town, it's ten to fifteen miles.
Okay.
So if every street in town was patrolled each day that the main squad was driven.
Yeah.
That's each street was only driven twice.
Per day.
And we have two full-time officers.
They don't work, they don't, they don't work seven days a week?
It's not twenty-four seven.
Well, even if you work eight mile, it doesn't matter how many hours you work a day. It's, that's how many miles per day.
Wait, so I guess, well, I guess what I'm hearing, how many, if, if you were to quantify, how many times do you want the streets patrolled per day? I guess, because that's what, that's the, that's the calculation you're coming up with? Which would be between, right now, based on this, it's being driven between two and four, if, uh, a day, if we have three sixty-five coverage.
Which we should with two full-time officers and three part-time, you should have seven days a week officer.
Yep, yep, so that, yeah, so, so based on the math, it's somewhere between two and four times a day, what's the number that you would like to see?
Well, each street in town driven twice per day. Seven days a week with two full-time officers, I think that's pretty low patrol.
Well, I mean, but, uh, independent of that, I'm saying, what do you wanna see? How many times do you want them to see you driving past your house a day? Because that's the, that's, that's the denominator you're, you're going after, so if that's the denominator that you're judging it by, I'm asking, what is the satisfactory number?
I think at least once every two hours, if they're on patrol. Or, I mean, that's, and then if you are tied up in investigations and whatever, that's sometimes even less than that.
So.
You know.
So we did, uh, fifteen thousand six hundred ninety-three miles a year, so we divided by twelve, or three sixty-five, let's do that in the two sixty-five, so that's, that's how many days, right? So it's forty-two, forty-two point ninety-nine, almost forty-three miles, so forty-three miles, and you're saying ten miles, drive the whole city, so that's top four. That's not like what you're saying, two.
Well, you, now you put in the, the extra squad that you used for community. You didn't put in the main, I haven't seen that extra squad car patrol.
I have.
I have, yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to make it sometimes.
It was actually moving to that.
So now, now it's two point three, four point three times, you know, and as I said, sometimes we're tied up, you know, it's, uh.
I just don't see, uh.
There's, there's a little bit more giant, than, you know, just patrolling, you know, to, to, to police work, where a lot, a lot of times.
I understand that, but with.
If we have any type of investigation, we don't have special investigation bureau here, it's just one person on duty that.
How many of those miles are helping other agencies?
How many of those are helping other agencies?
You have ninety-nine calls helping other agencies.
Yeah.
Those are, how many miles?
That's right. It's around, it's around Harrison, we don't, we don't go to like, you know, Winterup or Gibbon to help somebody unless.
I just think it's low.
Unless it's something.
That's what I'm saying.
Thanks for pointing that, but I was actually getting a lot of compliments as far as that, you know, we are very visible and, uh, the patrols are conducted, so. And, uh, as I said, it's amounts to like four times per shift. But ideally, ideally, I would like to see every hour, you know, that we go, drive around town. Doesn't happen all the time, no. Could be tied up or something else.
What are the patrol hours?
What are the patrol hours?
If we're not getting twenty-four hour patrol?
Um, well, let's say on average, it's, uh, it would be about, um. Eleven, twelve hours, I think, um, I'll have to real talk to him, because we, we switched schedules a lot of that, you know, we've kind of adjusted, but. Um, when I came here, I looked at what are the busiest times when we need to be on duty? And, uh, those are, you know, from the morning hours until probably midnight, you know, for the most part, you know, on, uh. On the weekends, when the bars were open, we stay a little, a little later. So you, at the budget that we have right now, um. Basically, it amounts around eleven, eleven something hours and then change.
Because that's working, working hour here.
Correct.
But you're asking patrol hour, or, or does it same thing?
Well, no, I mean. Who's on patrol after midnight till six in the morning or whatever? That's what I mean.
Well, we don't have the budget.
It seems like when things are happening, it's at that time that, you know. I don't know what time Wager's got broken into that night, or Charlie's bar.
Correct.
That wasn't one the patrol was on duty.
I would love, I would love to, you know, have twenty-four seven coverage here, but, you know, it just.
I mean, in fact, your brother told me, well, that was a while back, but that was like when he goes to work, he and I both go to work pretty early. He had strange vehicle running around down by his place, that's what, like, four thirty in the morning, or whenever he decides, you know, when he goes to work, he goes early in the summer. He didn't recognize him, and then I drove up to Wager's, put fuel in the truck, and I think I seen the same people sitting there, I don't know if they were casing the place, you know, but. You just can't make judgments, you know, but. He thought it was pretty peculiar, though, Steve, your brothers.
Sure, but I would encourage everybody. Sure, but I would encourage everybody who sees any suspicious activity, just report it right away and they can call me, uh, you know. Just call nine-one-one or civil county dispatch, they'll, uh. They'll get in contact with me and we'll go and check it out, me or Alex, we both live in towns. I mean, it is what it is. We just don't have twenty-four-seven coverage. I mean, it's, uh, I mean, I haven't taken vacation this year even, you know.
Right.
And, uh. We, uh, we put in a lot of extra hours, you know, if I, we have some kind of like, you know, I'm on salary, so I actually work more hours than I have to. A lot of times I come in and, you know, do some kind of follow-ups or something, you know, and, uh. I mean, if we have, if we want, you know, twenty-four-seven hour coverage, we'll have to increase the budget.
But basically, if you're a criminal, you'd wanna come to Henderson between midnight, whenever the Henderson police are back on duty. And that kind of bothers me.
Okay, so based on that question, let me, let me ask this, cause I don't have the answer to it. What, what criminal activity has, i- is basically been unsolved or. Or whatever between the hours of one AM and four AM that you know of?
That I don't know, but I'm just saying, if somebody knows that there's nobody on duty in them hours, that would be the time, wouldn't it?
It, it, I, I agree, and so I'm asking, based on this, this, uh, this kno- knowledge of lack of police coverage. Has there been a, in, uh, result in increase in crime during those hours, knowing that information? That would be.
No, no, that's, uh, I mean, you know, we, uh, overall, no. The answer is no. If it was repetitive, like repetitive, some kind of repetitive crimes occurring during. The night hours, I would obviously dedicate, you know, resources to night.
Right.
Coverage during the night hours. Uh, we did have some burglaries that occurred, we cleared them, but, you know, yeah, that's, that was during the night, but overall, the majority. Um, ninety-nine percent of our calls are during daytime.
And that's where I think these cameras on Main Street and stuff would help a lot too, because. I think was in, uh, the case up at, uh, gas station kind of solved because of a picture of the camera, right?
Correct.
Another incident was, I think. Another arrest, I'm just a private homeowner with a camera, wasn't it?
Correct.
Maybe what would help, um, Dimitri and your L E T G program, you can actually run. When your calls are. You can, um, go by the hour as to when you receive calls over the last year, and if you can bring that to the next meeting.
Yeah, I can do that. I can do that. Sure, sure.
Because that's kind of how I think police chiefs are based when they're gonna schedule squad tour.
But that's, that's what I did. That's what I did. I, I did the exact.
What do you call that?
I looked at the hours and looked.
The record system. The record system. L E T G.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a software that we're on and, uh, you know, that's, that's what I did is. You can't have it both ways. I mean, if I schedule people at night, working at night when there's one calls happening and, uh. You know, during, during a month or whatever, so who's gonna be handling, uh, calls during the day? You know, the majority of the calls. Who's gonna be handling those, uh, you know, thousands or eighty, eighty calls? If we have four calls during the night hours and then we have. Eighty calls during the day, you know, whenever, who's gonna be handling those? I mean, we just don't have a coverage, so.
I'm just thinking Dimitri would be good for the council to have, because, I mean, I've been asked why is the squad car on during the day? I have the same concerns as Steve, if you're a criminal, come to town in the middle of the night, um, but if you could show us that.
Sure.
I think that would.
Yeah, there you go. Sure, sure.
Okay. Any other questions for the chief? Alright, thank you. Alright, city administrator.
Uh, not gonna do the activity report, it's all gonna be, uh, within the appointment committees. Sorry, I'm sorry if so much different stuff came out. Obviously. Just forgot how some of this annual meeting stuff works, because I screwed it up enough times to do whatever, but, uh. Some things that are different and why, you know, people that have been around for a bit. Some things that are different and why we're putting together some of the things that we did is. Our comprehensive plan is relatively new, so I guess what I got thinking about is. The new council people are gonna ask, you know, what are, what are we doing? What's our goals? What are, what are these committees supposed to do and whatever, so. I went through that and I went through the appointments from the previous years and kind of lined things up that way. When I first did it, I just kind of went off of our old sheet from before, never went through the annual meeting notices and, you know, whatever and. Through a couple of different emails that have, and calls that have come back and forth and discussions with Allison. We went ahead and I guess I revised things and. How I've got your, your packets kind of set up is. If you, if you take the sheets. The initial kind of table of contents sheets, which would be. It's first A through, A through I and. We'll flip through the, the, the actual big packets, so you can kind of get a comparison as to what some of these. Peop- people are doing or what, uh, what you could be doing, and if you, and if you've got some questions. Uh, based on, uh, what should we be doing or adding projects or subtracting projects, you know, we'll go ahead and do that. Today is, today is our annual meeting, so it's supposed to be an appointments, rates, uh, set our calendar for the year kind of meeting, not take on new projects or. Do whatever. It's all supposed to be those type of action items, but for. For reference purposes, and I think I got everybody good enough color copies, the things. The one through twenty items that I've got in red, those all are gonna need some kind of action on them. You can decide whether you wanna take, make it to twenty individual motions, or whether you want to. Do all the mayor appointments at one time or pull some out or do whatever. I would say that you do the city council. Kind of appointment thing, you should do those individually, I would, I would say. I do have some green things on, some green marks on as you go through, and those should, should have action items. On them and what I did do is I went A through I, which, uh. C, D, F, A, H, I, which are nine categories and I kind of put this together. In that setup, so if you got some questions, jump in, uh, as you go through things, I guess as we get to the first. Item, you can decide whether you wanna, uh, put them all together in one wave or do them all at a time. Doesn't really make any difference. I can just report them all, uh, individually if that's what you want. So the first thing. Now, I will flip to the comprehensive plan page. You can, I, I just put my hands attached it on there, but that's basically the cover page. From there, the first page, so that's, that's what I use, and so A is supposed to tie in history and historic preservation. So that's the sequence that I follow. So what we, what ended, what the city of Henderson has got that relates to history and historic preservation. Is, is, uh, the heritage preservation commission. I do have the heritage preservation report attached in here as A one and our C L G thing which is required. Which is also part of A one, so if anybody's interested in that, that is here, uh, after that. At this first colored page, that's actually the historic history. So if people are interested and don't know what that's about, that, that is what actually has been designated. The current people on our, uh, heritage preservation group, our Pat Steckman, Arlene Bussi, Julia A, Healy Rannell. Jeff Steinborn, Amy, Amy Hardle, uh. Chief, you can't be on here if you're a member of the city council, if you read through some of the appointment terminology, so, so she's no longer on. I do have a note here and we haven't done it in the past, actually appointing a commission person. But it does say in our criteria that if you're the head of the planning commission, you're also ex-official member of the heritage preservation commission. And later, when it gets to the planning, planning commission, which has been to city council for the last eight or ten years. I'm gonna recommend that you actually appoint Amy as the chair of the planning commission, which then would. Kind of minimum allow her to do this, and then if there were some planning things, uh, that were done, that she could kind of get some of those up. So the two items that I have there, they're both mayor appointments with approval from the city council, are the heritage preservation commission and the Joseph Brown Heritage Society. We haven't at this level reviewed the Joseph Brown Heritage Society, probably for ten or fifteen years. Uh, but I did, I did put the concepts and the agreements in there. What we've got for the Joseph Brown Heritage Society. Is a agreement between the city, uh, Sibley County Department of Society and Joseph Brown Heritage Society to run their health or system with that. In my opinion, there used to be a council person that was on that committee as well, it would be, but that hasn't happened for the number, number of years. So I'm, I've been only appointing on that for the remaining ten years. The group is still funding, but it's, it's very limited for this year. So I guess those are my category of A things, and I don't know if you just wanna do those or.
We can do one at a time, that's fine. Okay, so knock them off the list here. Does anyone have any thoughts or comments on this one?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Alright, got a motion, you have a second? Got a motion, second, also maybe say aye. Go the same side, alright.
Okay, and now B, uh, that deals with economic development and housing, which are probably. The next fall report contained in, in that, uh. In, in the comprehensive plan or the excerpts that I pulled out, uh. We haven't officially had a, had somebody as a chair, well, I guess the mayor has kind of served as it. Uh, but we haven't really officially met. I would suggest this year, we actually, when we have some council meetings. We schedule an E D A meeting either before or during or after a couple of times, and just concentrate on economic development things. One, one thing that's in this housing, housing stuff, that, uh. The city has done for at least sixteen eighty-eight years, ever since we've had issues with, uh, O P U Heights development. Is allow for, either on a case-by-case basis or on a blanket setup, approval or waivers of fees and all of. Kind of things, so, and maybe, maybe follow along with, uh, better council people can explain how that works to the, to the new people, but, uh. That's. That would be one thing that you may wanna consider, because today is your fee setup thing. If there are other things in here, if you haven't actually read through the economic development, housing, uh, items that you wanna discuss. Um, or add to, go ahead, but I don't plan on going through each of those things point by point, but they are, there are, they are two of the main chapters. Focuses in the comprehensive plan, uh, two thousand, sometime during this calendar year, I mean, I guess probably by July or August. Most of the facts and figures in here should update because the census, this is all based, it's pretty, this is based on the two thousand and ten census. The two thousand and twenty-one, city coming out hopefully in spring, and then usually region nine, places like that. Stratton Lake bunch of data, so we should be able to update all of our economic development and housing stuff, uh, by the end of the year, if we have current. Current data, and I did, while I get on thinking about the comprehensive plan, uh, I did give you the, I, I did on a couple of different emails. Put the exact links on there, so, uh, the links to the plan, so if you need to see the whole plan, you can go ahead and, uh, take a look at that as well.
Yeah, so, uh, on the housing, um, this all started because O P U Heights is a subdivision that failed. Went into tax forfeiture, um, the council got it out of tax forfeiture and to incentivize. The, uh, the development of that, we waived building permits and fees and hookups, um. We have found that to be extremely successful with basically no new blocks left, that is basically finishing out essentially this year. Uh, as a full subdivision, and we took the real long-term view on that and it worked out really, really well. Uh, we had other communities, uh, contact us about it. We got, uh, Twin Cities press looking at us for it. Um, did, we did that because of our own economic issues, uh, with related to the failure of O P U Heights, uh, on its second order. You know, now from a societal standpoint, we have another bigger economic issue sitting right in front of us in the pandemic and everything else. And, uh, as a, as a, as one of the few economic levers and incentives that we have. That has been proven to be successful here, um, I wanna propose tonight that we actually do our own little. Economic stimulus incentive and continue that, that program. Uh, and that philosophy for, uh, twenty twenty, that we, we waive. Building permits and fees for any, and hookups for any building permit called in the first six months of twenty twenty. Uh, with, uh, with the project starting by the end of twenty twenty. For twenty twenty-one, yes, twenty twenty-one, thank you, um. Because, uh, if we don't, we don't, you know, try and get people investing dollars here. And, and investing in Henderson, no one else is gonna do it for us, and we've proven kind of doing our own thing, doing it in our own way. It's been really successful, and, uh, I just, for, from a COVID standpoint, uh, and recovery standpoint. Uh, I, I think I'd like to see us be able to, to do that again. Um, for the, for the first six months, to try and incentivize action, uh, where none might be taken. Um, and so that's, that's what I would recommend, in, in addition to just the, what we've done. I also wanna say any remodels that are, uh, that are done, that are equal to or greater to, uh. Equal to or greater than twenty percent of the value of the property, uh, as it stood before the remodel. That is what I'd like to put before consideration.
One thing I don't have any of, that I just remembered when, uh, we haven't. We thought it was gonna incentivize people, but it didn't, uh, we've got, uh, veterans. We, we waived fees for veterans as, as well, in meet certain criteria.
Yeah.
We maybe had one, that we actually did through an ordinance, so I think that, that stays in, so we don't need to. Adopt it each, each year, or we actually pass that, so that, that's, but it is something that we haven't. We haven't, we haven't used very often, because people haven't.
So I wanna put that up for consideration, any, any discussions or thoughts on that?
I guess I personally would like to see it, like, lose the twenty percent. That seems like a lot of. Messing around to me.
Okay, okay.
Just if you're gonna, if you're willing to fix up your property, everyone else's fees are waived, I think they should just be waived.
Okay, okay, I get you.
Cause you're, you wanna promote bettering the community and fixing up the property and.
Totally correct, I agree.
It'll just eliminate arguments.
Okay, I like it. I think I have a better idea. No, I, I think it's in a stupid observation, thank you. I like it, um, what if somebody comes in in July though?
Well, I'd love to do it all year, because we've been so good at it and so many other communities have called us on it, and, and I think it's really good. It's worked, um, I just saying six months was dis arbitrary, um, uh, but if you would do it for the full twenty twenty-one. I'd be all on board with that too, cause that covers an entire construction season, you know, uh, cause planning does take a little bit of time. Um, cause, I mean, that's what we did with, uh, with the, the O P U Heights. Is we said, we basically put it through a year knowing that, say they finally pull that building permit in, say, October. They might not be able to break ground, and so we gave some lea- leeway around that, and I, I'd certainly be happy in order to that. That kind of thing to extend a little beyond June thirtieth.
So how are we sitting for commercial property? I've been looking for some commercial property, built something on it, and there's just nothing around here.
That, well, one of the things that we're really, really good at is tourism and residential housing, and it's. That is where we focus, honestly, um. Uh, commercially, from an industrial park standpoint, we just can't compete with the flatland communities of. You know, Green Isle, Arlington and Lesure who have much more, uh, flat land and resources, uh. Say, say we, 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 uh. Yeah, we, we just, the, the, the cost of that has been quite large, and we really couldn't compete with the Lesure anyway. Uh, they got flatter land, deeper market from the E D A standpoint, uh, but what we have is a very place to live, if people want to live. And that's why we built more homes in Henderson in the last eight years, for the rest of Sibley County communities combined, and so that's what we focus on.
But I'm certainly aggressive here somewhere in the plan.
We do, we do, uh, I, I think, I think we highlight, uh, right up by the water tower. Or at least there was that, that was the previous one in the mall, probably twenty-five years ago, uh.
What we say is, we wanna help the mainstream facade, I'm on, I'm on this economic development page, says we wanna help the mainstream facade of development. Uh, by the fiber, we just, uh, we get, that's on Sibley County Economic Development Corporation, that's, that's the point. We've been in business and set us loans up for tourists, you know, we have given out loans for people that have had, asked, and explore opportunity for medieval development, so I don't know if we've ever, I don't know if anybody's ever thought about that. And on our goal, if you look on page thirty-six of that, says provide additional space for business expansion, provide additional incentives to help new and existing here, expand existing tourism, focus on job creation, so...
It, well, and, and to be totally fair to, to the effort, uh, the, the commercial thing was a, uh, was really secondary to let's get the roads and floods fixed, and then that'll open up more opportunities to have those discussions, because it will be a ten ton road.
Well, that's what I'm getting at, I mean, if the road gets done, it's gonna help the main street.
For sure.
Plus with the pandemic for twenty twenty, kind of, you know, deterred all of that for the whole year, so hopefully now, as things get somewhat back to normal, we can get working on this.
Yes. So I, I like the, you know, a lot of people, I don't have all the intros and whatever, but I mean, a lot of people put a lot of effort into putting this stuff all together, and if you look at page thirty-six, I mean, it lays, it lays all this out, and I mean, provide additional space, provide incentives for businesses, expand, create jobs, you know, so, quite honestly, yeah, we, we've, we've talked or met as city council and have promoted a few things, but this group is not met as an economic development authority, well, for sure, if you've been on, right? I mean, that's...
And...
Yeah, it's, it's, you know, so, so we, we, we haven't done it, done anything or explored anything, so if it's something that, uh, that's, that you think is something that we should do?
Yeah, no, I, I, I think it would be good to explore, um, but let me ask a clarifying question, within, i- is that, is that a general question, or is it a question within the context of the, the building permit waiver? Like, you wanna expand it to commercial?
I primarily, I don't even care about that, I just want a place to build.
Well, unfortunately, this isn't just about you, you know, we're trying to, but I get what you're saying, because we're all bringing our own experience and background from the struggles, and when I moved to town, there wasn't really a house to buy, and that's why we built, and that's actually a very similar issue that other people have right now, is there's really not a lot for sale. I think one time, at one point this year, there was one house for sale in Anderson, that's it.
Well, if you look at the real estate, the houses that go up for sale, like in Henderson, and just around here in general, I mean, they're listed and they're sold pretty fast.
Yeah, yeah, so... City limits wise though, we're really kinda landlocked. Yeah, that's, that's been the challenge from an industrial standpoint, for sure. Unless we were too annexed. Yep, yep, and that's why we focused on the residential, uh, cause we've got those inlay lots, we've got, you know, O P U Heights three is already, you know, ghost planted, uh, and owned by a, a, uh, person who wants, is willing to sell it to a developer, uh, so those, I mean, we've just kinda worked on the stuff, we've been successful at it, there is actually room to expand that.
What about the property up on the hill there with the barn ready to fall down, is that something that'd be used for commercial use or not?
If you, you wanna rezone it for that, you sure can.
What is it currently zoned, there's actually a zoning map right here, right now, it's, uh, it's like a hand stuff.
So it's multifamily, right?
Yeah, R two, so, or... So, but yeah, that just, I mean, this is the planning commission right here that rezones, so...
So if a guy wanted to build, uh, storage units up there and such, in that area?
And if you look, if you had, uh, the lots themselves are, I don't think you'd need a whole lot of changes if you ended up, and what happened, the yellow one doesn't always happen, then you'd have to change, so, the zoning map is bad. So, back, uh, eight fifty-one is the zoning map. So...
But, I get, I get, you know, I get what you're saying. Uh... Yeah, apparently both of them. Are you looking Merrick for a motion on the feed?
Yeah, for, for, in, in bait, but I, I, I would like to, I'd definitely like to include Janet's feedback on that, I think it's very good, um, and you're in clarifying, are you okay with all of twenty twenty-one?
Yeah, I mean, I really think it's something that the group should revisit every year.
Okay, I mean, we've been awesome at it, it's, it's given us, like I said, O P U Heights, twenty-three lots were, were empty, so, and now there's young families up there, there's grandparents up there, it, it's attracted the entire spectrum, so...
So if we did this with this, then, um, people wouldn't have to come for us, to us, like they have been?
No, they'd still have to come for permits, it's just, they still gotta follow the building permit.
Right, but they won't, they won't have to ask.
But they won't come before the council.
Like, look, Steve, it's, yeah, 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 yeah.
Steve, or whoever, and so, for example, uh, the, you know, that, that seventeen acres of O P U Heights three, all of a sudden that developer went, hey, well, this is, I got an opportunity here, you know, they wouldn't even have to come to us to explore that, it's just very...
Awesome, yeah, right, cause yeah, right now, it's allowable, but it's allowable on a case by case basis, this basi- this, this basically allowed it from January one to December thirty-first, for not only new construction, but also remodeling. No, I'm, I'm down with that.
Well, I would make that a motion, that we waive, uh, new construction, including business.
Commercial.
Commercial.
Okay.
Uh, new construction, um, and remodel for twenty twenty-one. Excellent.
Well, I've got a motion, second.
I'll second it.
Motion, second, also, maybe say aye?
Aye.
All the same time.
All right, thank you, that's awesome.
I'll still keep them, the speed, the building inspector, that speed in there for, um, like, uh, roofs and that, you know, it's the standard fifty-five dollar fee, so those, those will be the only, those will be the only ones that will handle, and that'll make a difference in two on, we're working on trying to get something on the website, she, it's on there for the permits, but as far as submitting, we're gonna try to do direct submits to Jim, everything online, so that basically there shouldn't really be no reason we need an office person to relay the permits, we should be able to come online, the other, the other one, like, uh, the over the counter one, basically you're just gonna skip right there and send the information on.
All right, um, okay, so, thank you, back to, we haven't made the appointments here.
All right, I'll, I'll, back to you, Paul. Go ahead, you got, uh, you wanna select a chair, somebody should select a chair for E D A, and right now, E, right, right now, we've got Amy of Sibley County E D A person, and Janet as the chamber person.
So the E D A is us, right?
We are, we are, we don't have a chair, just a matter of the E D A, the city council, uh, Paul has served as the chair, however, you know, but we've never met, and so, uh, what I would, what I would prefer is actually having a structure, so that we have somebody to say that's needs, whether, whatever, not necessarily a different day, but as far as city council or, you know, or whatever, and bring up E D A associated things, whether they're the six thirty or, or, or...
So, or with the Z D A, are we gonna work for some grants and stuff then, do?
All right, when I, that's, I forgot too, that I should, what I should clarify, um... Uh, let's see if I got it right, I guess I did not clarify that, but I did, it's, it's the economic development and housing committee, if, when you see, I, I refer to it as E D A, there is per statute, a E, a statutory E D A, so, communities of three or four or five thousand actually have an E D A, ours is not, ours is just an E, is an economic development and housing commission, uh, and, or committee, and, and so, uh, we, the city cannot get separate E D A grants from wherever, and we don't, we don't, we do not have an official economic development authority that's set up, that's set up statutorily different, you have to, uh, you have to have your own rules and bylaw and whatever, and that's not part of city council, that's...
Well, that's what I'm, I was kinda looking at, getting something going with that though.
That, you could, you could set that up outside of, of, uh, of city council, you know, that typically, chamber or somebody will be part of the economic development, this, this, and then they would come, they would, they would, they would come to the city council and ask for a budget, I might want to put the city council, well, well...
About ten years ago, Jeff, you'd have to remind me, about ten years ago, there was actually a proposal for the chamber, the city to go fifty-fifty from a funding standpoint to fund an E D A position, kinda like Lesure does right now, right? It's something, it was something like that, I don't know if they were maybe forty hours, but maybe it was either half-time position, uh, or three-quarter time, uh, then the chamber would fund fifty percent, the city would fund, yeah, fund that, that E D A law specifically, but that, that didn't go anywhere at that point, but it was a great idea, I know, at the time.
I mean, there's a lot of things you can get, you know, going that route.
And, and I agree, I think E D As have a lot of opportunity, it's just a function of time, and, and from a city council member's standpoint, uh, generally, we haven't seen the availability of time to focus, and that's, that's where the, the position, the, the funding position came from, and so that person could focus specifically on grants and working with businesses and things like that. I mean, I would be more in the tickle to revisit that idea.
Well, I won't get into it this meeting, but I think I got somewhat of a plan.
Okay. And from a, from a city council standpoint, uh, I don't mind doing it, um, I mean, you guys already know, you know, I've been meeting, whether it be them in the review or whomever, uh, the developers, um, so, it doesn't bother me, it's an area of interest I'm gonna do regardless, um, but if someone wants to take the fish island, it wouldn't bother me a bit.
Or you just leave it like this, and if, uh, Steve is going to actually find a methodology to establish, whatever you're gonna call it, Anderson area economic development, whatever, it's fine too, you know, then, then you don't, you don't, you don't need that as part of the committee, that's true, we just leave it alone. You still, you still will need your appointments for Sibley County E D A, which is separate, and that's, and I think, and that's, that's kind of where everything has fell on, is that, uh, if there was one stuff that was gonna happen, it was, let's, let's try to get Sibley County E D A to, to do it at, at one point, this is more than ten years ago, uh, and there's some people really tried to be in the forefront of Sibley County E D A, and there was, it, it, it was actually good, it's the communities are doing whatever, all that kind of all, still by the way, by many people, they need, they do, I haven't, uh...
Well, the director got hired by Arlington as their city administrator, so that, I don't know if they've recovered from that.
So I don't, I don't know if anybody went to a meeting last year, you know, so, but that's again, it may be a team or a final, or...
Well, do we wanna take, go ahead, what's that, Jen, go ahead?
I thought Laura went to those meetings.
The E D A ones?
The Sibley County E D A or I, I don't remember.
I think she did, cause that was help, there was one help here too, right? But...
Okay, okay, well, do we wanna take motion on, uh, number three, or number four and five then? Yeah, I'll, I'll approve, I'll make a motion to approve those appointments.
Okay, you got a motion, give it a second. You got a motion, second, also, maybe say aye? All over here that?
Aye.
All the same time, all right. If somebody wants to go more for that, I'll give the numbers to see, and, um, I'll maybe, oh, yeah, that was in the back, uh, back to B, um, there is the, it has been in the paper, the COVID nineteen funding that's available, so, uh...
Is that the press release?
Uh, this, this was the press release that I hear, so, uh, you know, I got a new thing with a new neighbor day, you know, so, there is, uh, application, we'll go under that site, people will go on there, go let out, they're one of the...
This is different than the one that was sent out at the beginning of the month? Different application?
All right, got it, the one I saw was like the third week, yeah, somewhere in there, so I have a kind of a vote here for that. Yeah, that's, oh, there was, there was actually just like a four or five day gathering. Oh, right, yeah, yeah, but that's...
Is it the phase two?
Yes, that's what it said.
That's, it's the same application.
Parks and trails, um, again, just, there are other places when you're gonna reference a larger community that actually have what it states, it's statute, you do define it as hardcore, um, Anderson does not have a state statute type hardcore, those, well, you can't, legally you can't unless you're population or your community goes over those. So basically, Anderson's got a parks and trails committee, uh, one thing that I added in here that we haven't done in ten years or longer, is that we did it, city did adopt a tree board, or have a, put a tree board in place a number of years ago, that doesn't use the pro on that, um, there, there have been meetings with D N R representatives about doing a whole lot of tree replanting, and there are funds available for that, but part of, you have to have a tree board established, you get those funds, so, we don't need to reestablish our tree board, I just left that all in here, um, right, great. Uh, the only one new that would be on this would be Beth Cornish, and she's been to the last couple of our, uh, planning meetings, she's part of the tree stuff and whatever, this year she is, uh, she is Anderson Lions Club President, so that's, otherwise everybody else is the same that has been before, I think, a number of years.
Do you want a second council person on that?
Glad to hear it, uh, it would launch here.
Steve, are you interested? I mean, you've come to one of ours.
Park four?
Yeah, I don't care.
What's that, yeah, okay. All right, we're looking for motion.
I'll make that motion.
All right, get motion, give it a second.
Second.
Motion, second, also, maybe say aye?
Aye.
All right, and then, this is, this is actually a pretty good map, you can show over the park and the trails and whatever, they're all active, so...
But it doesn't show the one gender codes.
It does not, yeah, no, this is out of the comprehensive plan. Uh, next thing is land use, again, we haven't done, hardly made anything on land use for a long time, there's only stuff that's created today, that's covered in eighteen days, we haven't had an active planning commission for a meeting or a meeting here, um, I could do with the D L, I could do how all things are set up and the goal, whatever, you know, if somebody wants to, but I, I would recommend that, uh, we actually have, we actually, me putting a chairman on kind of reinitiation, and I would recommend that, if you go ahead and do that, maybe on that, and that's in connection to what you talked about, correct, get it all, because we're, uh, we actually...
So is that like, um, economic development then, um, that, then the rest of the members are us, or?
Yes, 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 just a matter, just a matter of, if there was a planning machine, or if you apply for a zoning, a zoning, a zoning...
And you can share.
She would just need to hear.
We'd be the other.
Right, need each other, correct, correct. Yep.
I'll make that motion.
All right, get motion.
I'll second.
Get motion, second, say hi. I don't have any detail or a lot of the main part of it, but I just, we kinda have these kind of committees in a different form before, but community facilities are, any building that we got, which is different than any of the pressures we've got, uh, so. I think there we do. Put those out ahead and we'd kind of be planning and talking about any, any of those things.
So that's regarding any city buildings?
Any city buildings, correct, yeah. Well, and if you look out here, you know, with the school, things like that.
Okay, yep.
Yep. It's the, it deals with, yes, yes, it deals with, you know, community facilities, you know, and that, and that's kind of where that ties into, um, the things that, uh, we're talking about meeting with, uh, Seward Henderson group. Oh, yeah, I guess, I got a lot more things here. Uh, yeah, that, that would, the community facilities would be that and part of that whole number E or letter E, types of library board appointments and then also remember, Seward Henderson School Board Education, why, obviously we have not had that. Library, library board is one number nine, we've been totally lax on doing that, we did, we did do appointments, if, if you read through what it says in our, in our, in our, uh, code, um, we're supposed to do, you know, it's supposed to be like involving a number of directors. At least just appoint one, don't remember, on or off, or, or number, or number E or N. On or?
No, I haven't done it thirty years.
It's supposed to be seven directors, I wonder whether they have them or not, right? We haven't really been, Robyn's been handling, handling it the last couple of years before that, yeah, they were, they were the city stuff, but, uh, right now, we're not doing all, all of that, we're supposed to do it in big packages or all of that.
And you do know how many were on that board?
Only going five. And then the, the city council liaison.
Well, does someone wanna be the city council liaison and go figure out who's on there? Cause I'm not sure they've met a whole bunch this last year either, they've been about scared any group down, so.
I mean, I've served on it before, so I can do it unless somebody else wants to, because I feel like I'm getting quite a few.
I think if you have an interest, you're the best person to do it.
Right.
And hopefully we can follow up, and I think if you do meet with them, you know, I don't, nobody's trying to, I don't think that you do that every city council, who will impose their will on what, uh, library, library board, the friends of library are doing. But just let, let them know, we wanna, we wanna get into compliance with our rules and whatever money you got, we wanna do standard appointment, appointment so that, on their own, figure out who's where, the next year you can just follow it, okay, these two big characters, raise money.
Yep.
No, we got a great library, we don't wanna screw that up, so.
Motion for eight and nine?
Eight.
Ten, yeah. Okay, I'll make that motion.
All right, get a motion, give it a second.
I'll second it.
All right, get a motion, second, I'll say hi.
Hi.
Same sign, all right. Uh, Henderson Fire District. Robyn was on there, those are actually two year term appointments, so Dennis got one, one more year left and her appointment, maybe one more, we need one more person. Maybe both Evanoff, which is Beijing, somebody should make a motion.
It meets every other month on a Monday, so it's only six twenty or?
So where's this at?
That's the fire hall.
Down here?
Number eleven.
Yeah, I think it'd be number eleven, right, this, this year there'll be four, five people on, there's always five people on and, next year we'll have to have three on, next year it'll be harder to get two. So right, right, yeah, right now, Dennis on for one year. Whoever, whoever else goes on is the, uh, member goes on for a one year term and then, um, well, I'm actually, everybody could have to be on for two year term because then we're on, then we got, uh, we got three people, you know, so. And, and maybe it's like a fire, can't be on.
It's the third Monday of the odd months.
Steve, did you wanna do it?
Okay.
All right.
Steve, you guys, the appointee and, uh, Paul is the, is the, uh. All right, I need to vote it on that. All right, give it a motion.
Make a motion.
All right, get a motion, give it a second.
I'll second.
Got a motion, say hi.
Hi.
Same sign. Quit, my, um, this would be, this is the, uh, well, the amount that we got, hopefully all speak, but man, I don't like this, I don't believe this one as well. Um, but why actually I don't, that, uh, that, that Bruce has talked about and I talked about with me a couple times, is, um, our snow blower went down and, uh, whether we wanna replace it or look for a different procedure is, uh, how we're doing it, I don't, you've got some costs or whatever on it, but, um, we do have probably three hundred thousand dollars for me to implement once you start adding up our, our holder and, you know, whatever, that snow blower that we got, over twenty years old and we get parts to fix it, but it almost seems like it's, Bruce, Bruce could get a price, basically, you know, it's like it could still be twenty three grand if you get a dual. So, that doesn't necessarily mean you gotta go that route anymore, but, but then I know if we do a different route and we start practicing some of that stuff out, it gets to the point of, what's the reality of it?
Yeah, probably, the only, uh, one thing I would add on here, uh, and we haven't done it for a while, is it's probably the capital improvement. If anything, it, uh, it's that, should be someone that's ready to go faster. We haven't, private updated it, it's down here, it's a little bit later on.
It's, it's at the end of infrastructure.
Oh, perfect, yeah.
But, yeah, I'll, I'll break that up, I mean, that's the other part of it, but I hope everybody would do this on the different committees, is when you look back here, there is a capital group whose plan that you took one on and it's that building comes with infrastructure. So we, we have, how that's supposed to work are these different committees and departments are, which come each year with, okay, this is what I think is all needed, and we lay that out for ten years as to what actually is gonna, is gonna be used, yeah, we, we have not updated that, or not anything. That's, that's where ultimately that needs to go, but we don't, we're not ready to decide all that tonight, but one thing we should, decide or at least get some input on is which we wanna look at tonight is where we're at, where we're at with snow removal and, right now, we've got, uh, Benny hired to, you know, to do our sidewalks in public areas and whatever. We've got this, and they're helping Bruce do, uh, loading and, you know, I said we got in here, that's back to a little bit later for, uh, for just renewing those appointments, so.
How is it decided what sidewalks Benny does do? Cause the post office doesn't, he doesn't.
No, he just got that signature, all we're paying for is the city's.
All the cities, not the sidewalks.
Yeah, yeah, he does, he does, he does library.
Right, right.
So the businesses that he does are paying him.
Yeah, well, I don't know, they pay him.
Allison, do you pay him? Okay.
Well, as far as the snow goes, I don't know why we're not, when Benny sweeps the sidewalks, why we're not taking it to the center of the road. Just coming by after he sweeps the sidewalks off and rolling it back up on sidewalk and pushing it from one end of town to the other is pointless.
You agree to talk about it out here?
On the main street, yeah.
I'm not sure we can legally push it into the middle of the road.
Yeah, you can.
We used to do it.
City of Sleepy Eye is a US highway going right through it, and they plow everything to the center. There's no sense of working on it twice and handling it five times. You know, Bruce says, well, it only took five hours to load it, yeah, but it, you spent fifteen pushing it from one end of town to the other. I think we need to look at a blower that works, cause that thing that is not set up for that John Deere loader, that pump system and everything on there will not match that machine. Blew a hose on it here the last time, I mean, it was pointless again, Benny came in and finished it up. But you got an angle plow on them trucks, let's get the stuff to the center of the road and get rid of it right. Instead of, you know, people are coming to town in the morning, they don't wanna sit there and walk through snow that deep, eight feet wide along each curb.
But was there a reason we stopped doing that?
Uh, basically because the equipment and, I mean, we, we used to do with blade, we used to, we used to roll that into with the blade and then that blade didn't work anymore and then we only had that old Oliver tractor, which wasn't capable of doing it. And so then we went to holding it with the Oliver tractor and then we just never went back to doing it. But the other, also during that day, it was financials and stuff too, so we got paid for each piece of equipment, especially maybe I should make a preference with that. We got, we got paid from the state for each piece of equipment that we used out there, you know, that, that doesn't map on the table anymore. Uh, fifteen years ago, longer than that, probably, uh, now our, the only deal we get with the state for us basically, clouding nineteen, is we trade off consulting, I mean, so with Bruce, they allow, well, sort of job, clouds out, we're picking up sand and stuff, whatever.
But we could try it without spending the twenty-three thousand, if we blade the stuff to the center of the road and get it in a windrow, we could probably load the trucks right.
How would we, how would we, how would we get it to the center?
You got an angle plow on it.
So we're doing, doing with our own equipment.
Right.
It's like, we can, we can, yeah, yeah, the other, the other, we could do with the other plow, yeah, the other plow.
I think it would be a heck of a lot better.
It's an option, I mean, to save twenty-three thousand on a blower, I mean, City of Sleepy Eye did it for years, they loaded everything with the payloader right out to center of Main Street. You gotta get a sign on each end, that would be something, uh, maybe patrol being around someplace, you know, but we got, getting a sign on each end of town, you gotta get a hold of the county or the state. You're not gonna deny you that.
No, no, I, I did talk to, after I talked to you, I mean, I did talk to all, with the guys that stand around, all the stuff, we forget whatever. Whatever you do, there is no incentive, you're not, we're not paying, I mean, we're not, we're not, we're not turning the clock back and giving you money.
So let's be clear, you're just not giving any money.
So, I mean.
But, you know, I know that sticker shock, that twenty-three grand, that's a good blower, but the thing is, we could still speed up the process if we blade everything to the center and we can load the truck. Maybe you gotta, even if you got two trucks to haul, make it quicker, you know, you got a city truck too, but whether it's moving snow or other, or spread the sand, then it probably won't work, but. It can be done a lot quicker.
It's, it's, no blower at all, it's junk everything.
If it works, I mean, let's try it one time. See how it is for time. Time is money, I don't give a damn, I've been in this business long enough.
Cool, that's good. All right, now do we need to take an action or?
No, that, that's right, you can, you can take an action.
Okay. If you need to appoint a committee.
Okay.
We're looking for motion about that.
Get a motion, give it a second.
Second.
Get a motion, second, say hi. Same sign. Uh, the next thing is speech, uh, I've left it all together, infrastructure, transportation, telecommunications, blood mitigation, uh, it's a lot of different things, gee, if you mean that, it's a lot of different things in the, in the package. I, if you wanna, if you wanna stop those, I'll give you different projects, you can, but, I mean, those are typically all, like the small project is a big, is a big ticket item, that probably everybody wants to be all, finding a lot of, whatever, or, uh. But, uh, it's a big ticket item, so, I, I, I think you just, we would like to get, but unless you think there are specific things that are in that, in that infrastructure and transportation, that we should, uh, that we should, that we should knock out there. One thing I will add on telecommunications, somewhere in here, I, I do that as, uh, a long time ago, ours, I was gonna be, I never, I never had any, and that was all, I mean, this is the time, by design, it's awful, I believe, that one. Right now, we do have three different fiber options, I can run, for most of the city. Reasonably, Netronet brought out, called out Jaguar. You can get Netronet, which is our internet, which is an internet provider, if you deal directly with them, as well as, as well as MediaCom and I'm also thinking of paying attention, but Frontier is supposedly gonna be updating all of their infrastructure, they are, as well, because, uh, they got, uh, very hefty fines from state, uh, public utilities provision, for not providing any service for, for a number, for a number of years. But along with that, somewhere else back here, I say, we, the city initiated a franchise fee that MediaCom paid for cable TV service. Uh, they're the only ones that actually provide cable TV service, which are, you know, I would think almost about weak, but it almost sounds like we're done all of it. But, um, Netronet, who brought, who bought all, uh, Jaguar, is gonna wanna come do probably our next meeting and talk about providing more telecommunications services in, in the community and, actually, but if they wanna provide TV and cell phone, uh, which they could do and that, they're, that's, that's, they end up asking for a franchise fee there for, just like MediaCom.
Cause MediaCom does not service every house in Henderson, so why are we paying the franchise?
No, they pay, they got, they pay us basically like three bucks a month.
Okay.
So you're going, the city of, yeah, that's, part of the budget is, probably ten thousand dollars, they, if you, if you've got, you've got MediaCom, the city gets so much money. And if, if you got that talent, what's your life of feeling, you can split it so much money, the, uh, capital. What I'm saying is, if Netronet, they want to provide TV service, then the city gets so much money, but that TV service, you get nothing on here.
Do we give them a permit or anything like, uh, when they go down and bury stuff or down an alley?
Uh, if.
Or do they get a permit from us?
Or our franchise agreements would, would they, we can't provide. Basically, they, they go down, they can go down, they can use any.
No, I'm talking about Netronet now.
Netronet, Netronet, they have, so they, yeah, they, that would have a part of the agreement, that they have to find us for a permit.
Well, they already put it in, down my alley.
Yep, was that the cabling that was going?
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't, uh, it wasn't what they gave TV, they gave.
No, fiber.
Fiber, no, fiber, they would go, fiber, that kind, I don't know if it's your alley, but it's Netronet's down your alley or Frontier.
It's Netronet, it's all the truck.
It was the one that went down my street.
That was, that was Frontier, I think. Uh, well, they all, no, I mean, they all used our, our.
Just asking, cause it seems like, you know, when they bury stuff and then we have. Just asking, because it seems like, you know, when they bury stuff and then we have to dig something up, it really causes us more of an issue, because we got to watch for that.
That's why the franchise fee definitely will be structured.
But you said, no, you're saying we can't on?
We can't on internet.
Internet.
Internet is regulated by these. And you can't, and you can't on, uh, you can't on telecommunications.
Okay.
You can't on TV.
Okay, thanks.
And you can't on, I think you can't on the internet.
I'll make a motion to keep it like it is.
All right. Second.
I'll second it.
Aye.
Aye.
Number fourteen is under B as well. That was part of the open.
Yep.
Okay, um. Page. I think that's, uh, now I want, before you get to H, yeah, pull that out of the market. The company answer plan is not really just the draft, but the first stage, but was. If they pulled that one, it would have been there. Yeah, this, right now, I just, I just got a draft of twenty-one on there, which is gold for thirty, you know, so all the different departments. Take a look, take a, take a look there, I got one here. Uh, I don't, it was probably after that structure, maybe, you know, it might have been after H, probably.
Right after page sixty-five, ten sixty-five, sixty-six.
So it was after. Yeah, so all, I'm, I'm hoping that this is, that's going better, so that the, the, if you're on, we can start maybe twist and put stuff on here, get this redeveloped. You know, uh, we did spend a lot of the last five years talking about what's installed, talking about what's on the floor, getting that done. So I guess that is the major project that, uh, we're gonna check out. And I guess this is all, I am, we'll finish out the one word. All areas can be looked at H, that's all the, the limitation thing for all the things that we talked about from H through G. So at some points, I mean, they've actually got, you know, when you're talking about where or what different projects or whatever, there's actually, there was actually metrics in here. You can fill out and use whatever, so, uh, if you got some projects in fifth or if you get signed, if you look at all, hopefully somewhere during the year, we can, uh, we can, we can actually go blank again. At the same time, we talked about, a lot of that will come out and develop. So I guess now, I mean, everybody you wanted to do it before or after, you deal with acting mayor and personnel, the other proposal, the rest of the stuff is all in here, it's all internal control, uh, what you need to be doing if you're on state or all our utilities or, uh, the county, places and also the proposal from deputy like the mayor to provide, uh, utility bill and, um, council table service is basically something. All I want to make sure my actual base is regular happen.
Why don't, uh, I'll address fifteen and fifteen and sixteen together, um. The, in, in my recommendation for acting mayor would be Amy, and the reason being is, uh, Randy has been the acting mayor and that, all the acting mayor basically just serves in my absence, of which I've only missed like one meeting. Uh, but as we go into the next two years, and the possibility that I, him unable to complete or, uh, to not finish my term, the acting mayor would become the mayor, uh, on a, on a permanent basis until the next election, which would be, you know, somewhere between now and two years. Uh, but if we put Randy back in that spot, that would leave him in an incompatible office situation with being the fire chief and the mayor. And so the reason I, I thought maybe Amy would be good is because she has, um, full, full school or board term under her, the most experienced in that regard. Uh, to be able to just continue to guide the council, uh, if I were able to not finish out my term, so. That, that would be my recommendation.
My only thing is, um, for the acting mayor, and I do not want it, by the way, but in my head, it should be someone who's been on the council and kind of understands our current mode of operation and.
And so you're saying Jan?
Yeah.
Okay.
I actually recommend Randy, because in places where the mayor is seen and speaking, because he is the fire chief, he is there.
Yeah, but that'd be illegal though, for him to be the mayor and fire chief.
If he, if something.
If something happened and, right.
Yeah.
But for that, well, it worked so far.
Because I have a necessary.
And I, really, I don't want it, no, and, and, and that's my whole thought process, that's, it's somebody that should have, that should be kept down. Really, Jan, if you don't think that he's a whole thing, so.
Well, there's a reality, I'm not gonna finish my term, that's why I'm writing it down. It's, it's a real thing. It's up to you. If you wanna do it, you'll, you'll probably end up doing it, otherwise, that's why I recommended Amy, so.
Well, how can we run?
What's that?
How can you run?
I'll answer that. Because at the time in August when we were filing, the flood mitigation had now passed yet. And I wasn't gonna let that fail for the community.
I understand that, I guess, like, one man job. I mean, I see you were a key, key part. How do you feel about being that? You don't want to not put your fire chief position?
And then, so anyway, and that's, if, if you wanna do it, that's fine, um, but, uh, it's up to you.
What is the, um, reelection, uh, term for acting mayor?
It depends on when and where, I mean, uh, if it's close enough to the end of it, at the end of the next election term, you would just, you would just go without it for a while. If it was a ways away, then you would appoint somebody, but the most likely method it would make the appointment would be, if you, if whoever was the acting mayor, they would move up to mayor and now you would appoint a council, a council seat. But the council seat would only be a temporary seat until that next, until that next election. So then the next election, you would have, depending on whether their term was up or not, you may or may not have, uh.
But if these guys within a year, because they're, they're four year, within a year, I believe we have to hold a special election. Right?
Yeah, it would, yeah.
I mean, what is it for them?
No, 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 there, as soon as, as soon as they're in there, they, there's no more special election.
But if they quit?
Then you gotta appoint somebody to fill.
You don't have a, no.
No, you, they don't. I wouldn't, that's how I ended up on the council, I was appointed when George Shepherd resigned.
So, so you would, so, but whoever it was, I mean, whoever was the acting mayor, they would move up to mayor if the mayor goes away. And then the new council person, the new person to appoint, isn't appointing the mayor, they're appointing the conference. And to fill whatever, whatever term that, that, that is.
I don't know, I think post-master mayor sounds pretty good.
I'll make a motion to approve item H with Janet as acting mayor.
Okay, I hope you get a second.
I'll second it.
Kind of folks just like I was, please say aye. Most safe sign. All right. Okay, uh, nothing else on that page, we'll roll over to the internal controls and we're not gonna get into all the details on it, but, uh, the policies in here, oh, yeah, one thing tonight, uh, I don't know if they have it back, maybe, what would you should still have? Give that conference mission sheet. For all the internal controls, so.
Pass it through the packet. It's like, yeah, pass it through your packet.
Before fix that assets?
Number I three. I four. Still, it's still used right now, but, uh,
It's up in the left hand corner.
Okay, I'm all the way to find that, now, decide what the next thing you want to do. Well, I don't know, somebody that does, uh, if you guys are the whole in here, if they do a whole council table and have to do, what the next needs for the basic, they would be the ones to provide themselves a whole, and the information for the whole.
So does that mean that we would go away from them for others?
They're going on March thirty, they're, they're saying May thirty-first is, uh, is great, is great even. We have to decide that, we have to decide on May thirty-first, if we're gonna continue with them or somebody like them, or if we're gonna hire staff to, uh, to do something similar to what, what you, do you have a recommendation? For the, what I could tell on the, we, we got, we're, like, I care what I got in the budget, which is just plus eighty thousand, sixty something per, would have been with each division. It's two thousand now, I remember, a month or even a year, twenty-four thousand dollars, um. I have no reason to believe. Yes, you are.
We are.
You have the quality of employees. So for example, this conflict of interests that we're talking about, uh, well, all of them. Yeah, you have to answer your question, everybody, everybody is employed.
Okay.
So for example, you know, the social media stuff, employee stuff, you know, again, okay, uh, you know, the conflict of interest stuff, can the city hire, sell, let's see, sell their construction or whatever to do so. Are you asking how much? Um, without, without it, because it was in five thousand, has it? You would, you would have, on a short-term basis, you could, if he said it was the best you could get for that particular sign. On a long-term basis, then you'd have to go full, full batch, two months, you'd have to be doing, evaluating, it would have to be for the, we, you have to give the least cost. You know, whatever, you'd have to weigh it once.
Cause I, cause you're anything.
Okay, not, not, not a. But, uh, but it would take some caveat.
Right, like basically like, like there's a snowstorm, no one was available, reasonably best possible could have gotten. But if it were, and, 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 and I'm really just trying to honestly understand and make sure, right? So, of course, I know Steve has a capacity to clear out, uh, slant, you know, or whatever, the, the, whatever. Uh, for him to do something like that, that you could do, that you have a reasonable lead time, plan, and know what's coming, we could only use him if it were a bit. But under, I, I just.
I know you're trying to limit your, your, do you have anything, do you, do you have anything to add?
Talking about seller, sellers in the Congress, city, do anything, even on a, are you trying to versus you guys?
No, well, I just, I'm, I'm just making sure that, that we understand, because for example, uh, you know, the council gets criticized, we all know that, right? And Steve being a part of the council is gonna get criticized by even his pals, just because that, this is what happens here, you know? Uh, so if, if, if Steve is out there doing work, I don't want to come back on me or anyone else in this body, that there's any impression of impropriety, that he's using undue influence, sorry, using undue influence to, if or his position for personal benefit, which is the definition of the conflict of interest. So I wanna make sure that this body understands clearly the situations in which he would be working or could work for the city, so that we're very clear as a body, and he's very clear as a contractor slash member of this body.
Well, no, I think we talked about this a while ago. Actually, the bits that are on this here, they're all, they're, that's.
In a bidding situation? Yeah, but what about, what about like non-bidding situations?
Well, wouldn't it be like when we used the master survey, when Dan was on the council, I did all the oil changes?
I wasn't.
Oh.
That's what I got, it would have, you would be on, you'd have to make the determination that you're getting the best deal or whatever you're doing in that particular.
Also, also, therapy is, is available to me too, I mean, that's one of the considerations, you hire somebody who's on fresh in the council. You understand why else it's a candidate or will be whatever, whatever, that's kind of one of the other considerations that a lot of, I guess, he can, he can, it's a voice.
We have, uh, devil advocate, or, I don't wanna pick on, I don't wanna pick on Steve, but it's, he's, we've been talking about, the devil, devil, devil's advocate, kind of setup is, okay, we, hey, Steve, go ahead and hire, get, he would have to bid it out, you know, if, if, if he would take, take games back, if he was a little bit, and we, the guy, they never did the same, and he did it cheaper than Dave, he could do it. But if, uh, and as Allison said, something came up, Dave couldn't do it for Dave, we did hire him, and, uh, he couldn't do it for a week, well, Steve, I would have to do it. But more than one league without bidding, it probably would get you a problem. but more than one week without bidding, it probably would get you in trouble, because then, he's gonna have to put his bid in, or get his bill in, and now, whatever he's doing is open for criticism, because then whoever the competition might be, can say, you didn't, you didn't do it, you did it for a hundred dollars, I did it for sixty-two dollars, you know, and that'll happen, that, but that, but that's where master servant, we never had an issue, because master servant was the only guy.
That their oil changed?
Yes, your job, right, yes, but you can, you can, you can, and you can use the caveat of local, if Steve was the only, if Steve was the only stolen local person in Henderson, there wouldn't, there wouldn't be even question, well, I mean, you wouldn't have to do the, the total of that, so...
Okay. Right, thank you, just wanna make sure, because it's gonna happen, that, that, that's not gonna get Steve or the body who's working, you know, but if he does something for a hundred dollars, somebody in town is gonna say, well, I would have done it for Dave.
You're right, you're right, I hear you.
I'll make sure we just address that, so, okay.
Okay, yeah, then game back to, uh, two thousand dollars a month to do account, account receivable or do the utility bills and accounts payable, need some criteria, you're concerned?
Well, you know, Lon and I agree with you, um, my only concern is, because of the amount of time you put in, not full-time, um, people are always complaining, no one's in City Hall to answer the phone or answer questions if they come to the door, and so, I mean, I'm not opposed to these folks doing that stuff for us, but are we removing from City Hall a contact?
Right now, everything rolls over to my phone.
I know, I know, but they come to, you know, and you're not here twenty-four seven, but they come to the door, and no one's at the door, and then Facebook lights up, that...
And, I know, but that, but that's gonna happen whether, whether you hire somebody or not, I mean...
Right, but at least I'm thinking, you know, there could be some setups, then, if we had somebody in there, like, you know, City Hall's open nine to three on Monday through Friday, or whatever.
But in, in general, what, what would that, what kind of better service would that give you? Other, I mean, if, if, uh, I'll, I'll give you, like, he's been gone, maybe since, uh, June, you know, since...
Yeah.
And, uh, you, I, I, I know you get some stuff lit up on Facebook and do whatever, but both, the stuff that's been rolling over, I typically live here between, say, one and off between eleven, one thirty, and call a lot of those every night.
Yeah.
I would, if I get two people to come to the door in a day, it's, it's the biggest day of, of forever, uh...
I hear you, it's that person that comes at nine in the morning and you're not here, or the door's locked.
But, but, but for the most part, I'm in town, my phone number's on there, in about a minute and a half, wait.
Do you want that?
That's, I mean, that's, I, in comparison to hiring somebody for, uh, for forty thousand dollars a year.
Okay.
You know, um, if you put somebody on, you're, I don't know how you, how you not have on, I mean, you, you hire somebody, or you don't hire?
No, I know, I know.
Well, I, I, I guess that really is a question, when you put it that way, would the community prefer we spend forty thousand dollars for the two minutes it would take if we walk up here versus being able to sit over the door and see if this?
But why does it have to be forty? If you're gonna pay the firm twenty-four thousand for zero hours?
No, no, it's, it's forty on top of that number, but hiring a person.
Right, but why does it have to be forty? Why can't you hire someone to work from nine to one, ten to two, um, you know?
This answer falls.
Well, and, I mean, look at all the work you did here, Lon.
But I, I, I would do that whether there was somebody here or not, I mean, this, this is not anything that any assistant has ever done, this, this is all...
I think if we can have two full-time police officers, we can have a representative of the city, for when you take vacation, you, I mean, it doesn't have to be a sixty thousand dollar a year job, it doesn't have to be a forty thousand dollar a year job, I mean, what, I mean, it can be the, whatever the going rate for a secretary bookkeeper is, can't it?
Yeah, I mean, that's, well, if you're, that's, that's what that involves you, yeah, it's not much less.
What do you guys think?
For forty hours? I mean, it wouldn't be forty hours, though, it would be...
Fifteen hours, fifteen hours, I mean, that, when you throw P D R A, whatever, all in there, it's, uh, yeah, I, I figured that fifteen hours...
And in that sense, you haven't had that, I don't remember this is.
Right, if you're putting, fifteen hours a week, but you're, you're not, you're not gonna get this done by somebody that you're paying for fifteen dollars an hour, this, this is a twenty-five to thirty-dollar an hour job, running, running band, you run a utility building, and coding and doing whatever, this isn't, this isn't a tight, it's a temporary person, come over here and do it, I mean, Lindsey had a, had a master's degree in accounting, in public administration, and...
Lindsey did, yes.
You know, you're not, uh, so...
So if we did this, would that be like the hires, man, I had a question about my water bill, who would I call?
You call, you call it, it would depend, if you, you do, you call the same number, you call now, and if it's a question, I would answer it.
Okay.
I would answer it, if it's something Jane would have to answer, Jane would have to answer it, and if it's something on the bill itself, in the calculation process...
Yeah.
Then, then, uh, then have to like, the manager there, answer it. But as far as U C, if you call on U C or whatever now, uh, Lindsey might have picked the phone up, but Lindsey didn't have the answers, Lindsey had to call Dave, you know, so, it's, it's that, it's not, it's not like we've had anybody in the office, out in the field, for a utility billing question, I mean, they, they would, they would pick it up at the bill and say, oh, it should have been, it was ten, it was a ten, it should have been a two, you know, they can, they can figure that out, but, uh, no, I'm not, I'm not saying you can't, you, you don't necessarily have to have a person, but you're not gonna, you're not gonna give, you're not gonna give anybody for twenty-eight thousand dollars, or whatever this is, twenty-four thousand dollars, to do the coding and, and, uh, doing accounts table, and lighting all, whatever, all, to be creative, to do that, to be, if you're gonna bring somebody in, it's gonna be, like, I actually played, saying, somebody from nine until, uh, nine, nine until one, to answer the phones, uh, but I don't know what, uh, I don't, I don't know what answer you'd be able to give them, I mean, that, okay, that person would be the only question, they, they basically be, they basically be going to, they have to call I or James or somebody else anyway, I mean, they wouldn't be the ones, uh...
But I don't necessarily know that they care, it's just that when they call the city office, they get a person, there's...
But if you call right now, you're gonna give them...
Well, I know you're always there, but if, if, if it were a normal year, you'd be off following the twins for, you know...
That's, that's right, for the phone, the call is going up to the phone, if you call this phone right now, if you call number right now, it's gonna come right here.
Okay, can we think about this for a month?
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know, because it's, it's gonna have to be in corporate, or...
Well, let's, well, let's, let's do the math, since we're here.
Or can we think about it till next meeting this month?
If you wanna have bills, then...
I think we all have bills.
It would, avenue would be doing the bills, I think, I think.
Oh, so you won't, you, you're, you don't plan on doing it?
Well, I had, I, I had, uh, I had hoped not to.
Okay.
I mean, because, because that's part of...
Okay.
I just closed out this year, and, and he, that's, that's what's on this internal control, I can do all of that for this year because, but now we start to do, that's why avenue is starting up whatever day, now we start to hold it here, that somebody else gotta follow all the controls and do whatever, and I don't, I don't have anything to do there, I don't, nobody that I can think of, that I'm gonna train in, unless, or, for eighty to twenty dollar an hour person. Yeah, so I would prefer you do it the other way, that you let them go ahead and do it, and get rid of it after two months, if we're, if...
If we decide we want somebody?
Then, once the termination, basically, nature of the earth, do it our way, I mean, then, okay, I'm okay with that, I give you guys time to think about it, you guys have any thoughts?
No, I mean, I'm, I agree with Lon, of paying them to do the wire bills and stuff, really, that's not that bad of a price, um, I also like Janet's idea that somebody's sitting in the office, I wasn't aware, nobody was there, I just assumed it was because of the pandemic, she was working from home, Lindsey's no longer employed with the city of Henderson?
No.
Okay.
But she basically, how many, how many days has she been in the office since June?
Four. So there you go.
Cool, yeah, so maybe it's not needed.
And, and that's, and that's, and that's what Lon's point is, is we've already been doing it for six months, and here's a solution to save forty grand for what we've already been doing for six months.
And when I say four, I don't wanna, it's like, four, when she was actually, when we had somebody here for seven hundred, seven hundred dollars, I mean, there was, uh, basically from whatever, whatever school started with doing whatever it was doing, uh, that was based, that, well, that was, that was an initial something, yeah.
What about the fire district?
Absolutely.
Who's gonna get together that report?
Are you gonna do that?
Pay those bills and...
I would give that, I guess, depending on what that needs gonna be, I would give that to them as well, I mean, it's...
I mean, the bills still need to be paid, but that's probably not in on the bid then, I mean, there's a lot more than just a lot of those in them.
I mean, we, uh, the city took that from the fire district.
Right, uh, but, but, damn, you took it, we, the city didn't take it, like...
No, they volunteered to do it.
Okay, okay, yeah, yeah, okay.
I don't think you understand what everything that you do when you're doing it twenty-four hours a day.
But, but, what I, what I, what I'm saying, what I'm saying, though, is, that's like the fire district for a living, I mean, they, uh, doing, um, and, well, I don't know how to put this all out there, but I would totally be saving and doing whatever.
You can just say it.
It's, it's...
They're really good at it, they're more efficient.
But in comparison... Our, fund accounting, our county programs and payroll programs, utility billing programs, have not been updated, but again, I, it's, years ago, we met a utility committee, a lot, we met a lot more as a finance committee years ago.
Yeah.
We, we, we've let that slide, and I let it slide with the idea that because it was the serious factor of who we had in that position, I just presumed that person would grow into a full-time person, become community involved, become, do whatever, and you say, some of the things that you think I may or may not be doing, doing those things, and all, that, that never really transpired, and now, when I'm doing, I thought I could have a lot more of this financial stuff, and that was, that was in my head, it was, it should have been in my head in the first place, based on what this annual meeting's for, but that was in my head, as to, I should just be able to jump on our accounting and payroll and utility billing systems, punch six buttons, and it should be done, uh, that's, that's what avenue like to my experience, but our system is not close to there, like, it's like, I mean, I, I just uploaded this fund accounting thing today, and it was, it was, uh, like, two years ago, uh, almost, Jane should have had the water bills out two days ago, uh, he's sitting here stumbling around the last two nights, trying to, trying to get the utility bill stuff out, and you've got, because interfaces that go from your meter reader to what's going to water management, well, he couldn't get it, he couldn't get it, he couldn't get it, and said, well, you gotta go on, manage your update utility, I know, update utility, you gotta go step on, and in an hour, he had everything all done, but some of that stuff has not been done, and, and yet, it's, it's, it's our own fault because of, we're not following our internal rules, we're not, we haven't been checking up the last year, so, on what we were supposed to be checking up, and that's, and I'll, and I'll, and I'll, and I'll take that, that we should, we should have been doing that more, and we should have been doing our sign-offs and whatever, but, you look, we haven't, we haven't done one sign-off in the utility bill for a year, you know, and, uh, fund accounting, we're, we're good at as far as doing the bills, but as far as actually following up on what's going on later, we, we, we didn't, we didn't do that, so...
So how will they get our information?
It's my, you just sent, you just sent them everything, so, basically, they, if they did it, avenue is invisible without, so if they did a bill for XL Energy, they know that that's one, one, or they want more, three, one, that's, it's a standard, it's a standard code, Henderson doesn't have any new accounts that anybody else doesn't have, they...
So like, our bills will go to them, too?
Our, everything will, everything will get to them, correct? So that they'll, they'll have to, they'll have to run, yeah, they'll have, and they won't be able to make journaling, I mean, that's, that's something that I'll have to do, which, or, and, but that's kind of what our, our, our committee was supposed to be doing as well, so that each journal entry was supposed to be checked off and signed off by, by the committee, while we haven't, we haven't done that, you know, real thoroughly for, who knows, you know, who knows how, you know, so, that's, that's kind of what they're reading here, and that's, that's, I mean, when I, when I read what's required, what they're doing, I'm, I'm embarrassed by what they're having us, you know, of, uh, and, and that's why I'd be real apprehensive, to, to try to bring somebody else in for, for a little, so, so, yes, I don't disagree that you want somebody here, but that's what they're really gonna, they're gonna be here to answer a phone, I mean, they're not, they're not gonna be here to be coding bills and, you know, and, and, or calculating the utility bill and doing whatever, because each, uh, the utility bill, really, the utility bill, Jane puts that on his zip drive, and you throw this from the thing, and they go and you upload, and they just calculate them all out, and they got the bills stuffed down there with the address on, and they all get sent out, they're, they're done, you know, so, and that, and that's why at first I'm thinking, how the heck, two thousand dollars is inexpensive, but if you're set up for it, it's not inexpensive, I mean, and that's what you do as your life's work, and you do that for, uh, thirty different cities, it's not, it's, it, that's just something that this, this person is doing, you think they're doing it for, it takes, it takes us, uh, eight hours sometimes, please don't let it go, they're gonna be like an hour or more, and, you know, he does...
You're also removing a lot of revenue from town, and it, it happens at our banks, too, our, our post office, it's just because that's my place, it, it, it really gets cut, and our post office is not full-time, because our banks, everything they mail, except for when they use the postage stamp, get, the center post office gets credit for it, Abdo, wherever they're from, their post office is gonna get credit for all of our water bills, you're, you're reducing our revenue, but we're, we're paying another, another city's, um...
You are right about that.
And I, I don't agree with it, and I...
Because, because we'll still have to say, okay, the same policy, I mean, whatever it costs to mail something, it's gonna cost mailing, but it's, it's not necessarily gonna come through you, that's, that's true.
And it, well, and it, it's, it would be a transition with it, any transition is hard for especially our older population, which is decreasing, I guess, in ratio with the new home building, but I, I just, I really disagree, I think we need a place in the city, I think we need a representative, I think we need a face, if you want the avenue to, to come in and clean things up, and organize things, and code it, get it in order, get new programs to show you how, or show someone how to do it?
The, the new program could, no, the new programs are there, I know how to run the program, I'm saying, I'm saying, uh, we definitely need to hire somebody that can.
Cause you're not gonna be there, I mean, you could break your leg today, and I, I don't want you to, but I mean, it's...
No, I, no, I, it's, when, you know, all, you're, you're right, the policy, uh, geared up because you may be active there, yeah, I, if you, my contract expired last year, I mean, uh, I'm, I'm working on a, on a day, on a day-to-day-to-day thing, you know, something...
And it, if you, I, I really feel we need a rep... And it, if you, I, I really feel we need a representative of the city, we need to keep our city business in the city. I mean, I, I just don't know why you don't source it, I, personally.
That's, I think that's why I don't, I don't, that's why, if that's what I wanna do, well, I'll, I'll answer why I, I, uh, the reason I would do it is because forty thousand dollars. Uh, it, it's, and, so for example, if, if Abdo like in my review of this, and Rob, and LaBuz could buy us, there wouldn't be a hiccup. If, if we maintained it here, there'd be a huge hiccup, as we're saying, you know, so...
But you're gonna give it to them for two or six months, and then you're gonna bring it back?
No, no, that, that's not what this is, this, this is a permanent contract in relationship, just like we hires people, Klaus, no.
I'd rather watch you talk.
I have a big role, right?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so for example, the, you know, the same reason we, we don't, uh, we don't, we, we hire people to, to show up the sidewalks or, or the Sibley County, people who run the library and all those things, is because they're a little bit better at it, it's cheaper for us, it's more efficient. You know, and, and for the last season, do, do, would people love to come in here and, and, and see a person? At the end of the day, Henderson is a thousand people, we are smaller than homeowners associations in the Twin Cities. And they don't employ, you know, some of them, you know, and I understand what you're talking about in terms of the postage, well, then I would rather just give the post office two thousand dollars, and, you know, a replacement, whatever, and save thirty.
Well, that's, that's doable, but...
And I know it doesn't work that way, I know it doesn't work that way.
I mean, you're, you're taking away a job, a, a city position, a, a representative of the city, you're taking away the, the business, and you're taking away the face. Um, that's my point, I, I...
No, I, I agree.
But I, and it, it doesn't have to be a sixty thousand dollar a year job, I mean...
But Lon is saying, yes, it does, if you want that stuff done. And I, and I, and I agree, having done some of that kind of work, because we have to off PERA and, and benefits, we certainly go whole down. And so, you know, for example, with the finance director over at the sewer, what they pay a hundred is what they've listed that position for, but I'm not...
Well, I think that they're industry, I mean...
I understand, but it's some of, it's some of the similar problems, is my point, uh...
They got big, big industry.
Yeah, no, and, 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 and you, I understand what you're saying, the person who left and lived here wasn't involved here, you know? Uh, I mean, I understand what you're saying, and would it, would it be nice to have a face there? Yeah, sure. Would it be nice to call my tech companies and have their US call center? Sure, would it be nice for my iPhone to be made in the US? Absolutely. So the question, you know, because there was a major complaint about our budget a year ago, when the auditor showed up, and the council saw it, and there was a little bit of, like, reaction to that, and so based on him saying, I just found a way to save forty thousand dollars, I, I, I mean, he's responding to what the criticisms he's heard for the last twelve months.
Coding salary starts at seventeen dollars a hour.
Now apply that to the government servant, uh, whether you paid that person correctly or not, you know what I mean? That, that, how many will you let, seven, seventeen by eighty percent by, uh, we're gonna have a person over thirty hours a week, uh, by whatever interest rate?
Twenty-four.
So it makes sense to me, I'm not, or...
I mean, I get it for saving the money, but then, I mean...
Well, we can approve this for three months, right?
Sure.
And think about it for three months and see if... And, and the same token gives feedback from the community, how do you like this?
Yeah, it, it's, you're right, it's no different than, than Steve's commentary on, on, on police stuff. You know, if you want twenty-four hour coverage, just gotta pay, say here, you want somebody answering the phone, so that the, the, you know, some, you know? Eight people that come in a month, don't complain in our ear, and on Facebook, and be key word warriors, be about forty thousand over here. So, that's, it's, I, so I have no problem, you know, proving this on its work and getting feedback. But there's a reality to that cost, I, and, and, so, I understand what you're saying, and I definitely, you know, agree with what you're saying, man. But I view this as a response to a lack of local talent, people do this kind of, and the cost savings, which he's, he's done, or nothing but people bitching about for twelve months since the last time the auditor showed up. And so, I don't know, but I, I think what you're saying is fair, um, you know?
Well, and I'll admit, I was one of the people who saw red after the auditor.
Yeah, for sure.
But everything you're promoting, you're taking away. I mean, but...
No, no, you're taking away, or are we being more innovative on a, for a small city to be able to have a higher expertise for the size city we are, and while at the same time saving, saving dollars? Cause last I checked, people bitched more about the taxes.
But are their taxes gonna go down?
They, they very well would. Since I've been on the council, they have gone down twenty-five percent, so absolutely they do, absolutely they do.
Well, to move this, this on, I'll make a motion that we do it on this three-month trial.
Okay, so ever it says go from, it says January eighteen through, and here's March thirty-first, you would say go January eighteen through March thirty-first?
Yeah.
And then from a follow-up standpoint, how, how does it follow up? Well, like, like for example, cause we would need to know sooner than, than into that to, to make another action plan, so...
Well, I think by February meeting.
Okay. And so, so from a community input standpoint, how, what would be the, the fairest way to present that someone we brought by at our meeting?
Well, we got the paper here, can't we do an article?
Uh, see small, I lost faith in our paper, but we're actually reporting, just kidding, see it here.
What do you think?
Rachel?
Rachel? Can you do something, uh, kind of with, for community feedback on our highlighting how we're doing our billing system for water and sewer usage, uh, that we're contracting it out, that that's really means, you know, that there's less body time in the office, um, and that, uh, we're trying it, and that the community should give us feedback.
Yeah, how much is it worth for?
Yeah.
Yeah, if, if you wanna do simple math, would you rather city give you back a hundred dollars, or would you pay a hundred dollars a year to make sure someone's looking at it when they open the door? Et cetera, we have about, we have, we have about four hundred dollars, a little less, but... So, you know, just on a average basis, it's a hundred bucks a month, how much is it worth? Right? Lots over here, just cause you're new doesn't mean give us that, you're...
We're still soaking all this up, um, I agree with trying the, the auditing group to do the billing. Um, I'm on the fence yet about a person in the building or not, I guess that I, I still wanna research more on, see if it's needed or not. I mean, customer service is huge. Having a physical person to go talk to is big. I do probably...
Answer your question.
Well, right, I mean, if it's gonna be a phone call going to Lon, knowing that they're gonna go to Lon anyway...
Yeah.
You may as well cut the, the middleman out and go right to the person. When people move here, where do they go? They go to the post office, or they go to vendors, they go to grocery store? What are they asking when they come to the post office? How do you get ahold of anybody at the city? I've been trying to get a permit for a fence, I've been trying to figure out where my water bill goes, I've been trying to... Where, where do I find this information? There's nobody there. Does any of the information on the website, can they download permit applications, and so everything can be done electronic?
Yes, and utility, that's, that's where, that's, that's where I am really confused, because I, I thought that's where we were going, is that they were going like, getting stuff on the website, getting the permits on the website, to switch the part stuff over to the website, uh, and, or, for that particular purpose. So, I, I must have missed the last one.
Well, they still wanna say, I'm building a ten-by-twenty-four fence in the perimeter, do you have the phone number for, I mean, do you have the phone number to, to call before we dig, is that a service the city offers? People don't know when they're moving from Minneapolis to a small city, what, what is here, what, what do you have, and...
So to me, though, if, if you're, if you want a fence permit, when you did do, when you, when you could do it, that's me, you know, so I went and signed off on a fence permit. Somebody, where do you dig, say here's the nine oh one.
But you just direct them to say, well, please go to the website, that's what they would tell me at the post office, well, we did call the city, but he told us to go to the website.
Right, well, and I did, I did a fence permit, and it's all done electronic. I, I didn't, I didn't come down here to talk to Lon about the fence, it's all electronic. And then the electronic sign-offs there, the PDF files, all with that report, just like that.
And would it be just like that to me? Cause I don't want to do that stuff. But that is the way our society is going, is just about everything is getting to be online. Which will be harder for people that don't have computers, but then they'll call Lon.
And, and, and then, and then I'll take, I'll take the permit out to them, sign it, and give, I mean, a fence permit on my end takes less than two minutes. Uh, a, it's, it's harder, the way, you see the way I strip my name, I mean, on a, on a, on a cutter for a, for a water heater, it takes less than a couple of minutes to strip, you know, whatever, and I guess it's not even know why we would, you know, create a water heater, and those kind of permits are, are almost obsolete, you know, whatever, and so...
Well, we don't enforce it.
Yeah, well, it's, it's a matter of, the only thing that, like the water heater thing, I think you call it even, because then if our post is Jim, Jim goes grab that, grab it around once a year, and checks the box, and says, yeah, that water, something's got put in there, and then he billed us twenty bucks here, you know, we do it, so we, so we make it fifty, thirty bucks, thirty bucks. And then he said that's submitted, all, and then he said that's submitted to, uh, the planning state, and anyway, and it's, it's...
So my question is, something happened to you, who's next in line?
I mean, I need to...
I'm talking about your job.
We don't have anybody.
Well, I mean, uh...
Well, we didn't have anyone, even when we had a second employees, who, and Lon was telling, you know?
When are you retiring? I hear rumors.
Which is, it was out of opinion, because there was people that thought Henderson's great.
But they didn't, and you're gonna, okay, I understand what you're saying, yes, but what I'm saying is, if you're gonna take their opinion over Lon's opinion in terms of...
Well, I'm not taking it over Lon's opinion.
Okay, okay, I just want to make sure, but I, but I, personally, yes, I, I'm not gonna disagree, that if you're gonna, if you're gonna, you're gonna get a nice, warm, pleasant, smiling, you're gonna call up, and you're gonna, you're gonna end up coming away with a lot more pleasant, uh, experience based on some fur reach that's gonna go back, back and forth, all of us, and, but, uh, what I, what I, what I'm saying is, when they're following us to try to do all of that stuff all whole down, um, how, how much, how much does that smiling face work when, uh, we, we can get another fifteen, seventeen dollar smiling face, but I see no reason, uh, to where, from my perspective, we had a very, very qualified, ten-year experience, very educated person, and there's, there's holes all over in how, how things need, need to be, you know, need to divide, and, yeah, well, that's my fault for not following up and putting the hammer down, and the fault of our, supposedly we got this nice internal control system that we brag about all the time, but definitely did a crap job, because we didn't, you know, we, we took the... And I thought, I don't, I don't wanna replicate that, you know, to say who's gonna, who's gonna do it, yeah, somebody at some point needs to get, needs to get brought in. I, I don't know what that answer is, but it's, but I, I don't know if we're gonna know it by March thirty-first. Um, and I think, I think that's, to your question, I think that's something you really gotta think about, is what kind of, what do you want? I mean, do you, do you want me back again? I mean, do you want, uh, is that the kind of person you want? Do you want, do you want two people, do you want just a, you, uh, an active clerk that just does get everything in and shifts everything off from that room, whether it be planning, and whether it be, uh, financial or whatever, I, I don't know any of those answers, and, uh, and I think, each of you guys is smart, right? And you guys thinking about it being out for a while, I, I did have to make some kind of decisions, I would not, I'm thinking about it or doing whatever. I think maybe there's your March thirty-first is a really good idea, and getting, getting employed is always good, but I, I don't know if you're gonna be able to base your decision on that input, and then you need to think about what, how do you, how do you want this to look? I mean, if you're gonna, if you're gonna try to do a lot of this stuff in here, you need, you, you need somebody that's got some expertise to do it. Is that expertise, uh, a person you're gonna put on staff, and if you are gonna put them on staff, whether you think economy scales don't work just because the sewer might have industry or do whatever, and the person makes a hundred, twenty thousand dollars an hour, that's, that's institutional or educational knowledge, there isn't, you need, you need that level of knowledge to do some of these tasks, whether it's a five-hour person, or a five-hour person, and with that comes cost, do, it, so do you want those costs individually? Or do you wanna do a list of these, you know, that you get twenty-five thousand dollars for, or a, uh, accountant person, twenty-five thousand dollars for, a planner person, twenty-five thousand dollars for the community promotion, economic development person, or do you wanna try to hire two or three people to do it, which, uh, in today's world, it's gonna be a bigger number for me than those, than those, than those twenty-five dollars that you're, that you, that you throw out. I, 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 I just, may, maybe there are better people that I've, than I know or than I've seen, but they went that fifteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen dollar route, and easily end up right back in the main spot, this, this time, I was hoping it was gonna be a little bit different, and it was gonna be easier to handle, well, it's not, now we're back, I don't know, starting over, but at least you've got, you've got some, some ways to back up with and move forward. Long answer to your question, is there backup right now? No, but hopefully, hopefully by, uh, hopefully by March thirty-first, you got a plan figured out that there is, and, um, and, and I, I personally don't care which way she performs, that, that's it, that's a direct replacement.
So this basically is, this outfit you got, we're signing a contract with, I'm assuming, they're gonna take care of what now, the water bills?
And the cost payment.
And the what?
The cost payment, so that...
Right.
So that, yeah, so that, so that, uh, you, you send out, you send it in the bill, they get the bill, they code it, they do whatever, and, uh, they take the checks out, and then it's all...
And, uh, for a year, that's two thousand a month, right?
For, it's not that, it's two thousand dollars a month.
That's twenty-four thousand here.
And first, right now, the main, the main job of, uh, the, the main thing that Lindsay did were those two things, and then, uh, she spent a lot of time on...
I don't know, I think for forty thousand dollars, you could put a sign on the door and put a phone number on it. Somebody needs something, I mean, I've been here, what, two years, half the time the door was locked anyways, what difference does it make anymore? I don't know, I don't think, you know, other than your postage and I don't know what other, you're not getting a great benefit out of just because of that job to the community, I don't know.
Well, we've got a motion for Randy.
Would do the three-month thing like you said and see how it work, how it works.
Right, yeah, and, and, and so, so my question was, what are, what are our cues or our thoughts in terms of feedback? Hopefully people read the paper. But I think you're right on the base of what I said, is that, yeah, you're, you're gonna have to decide by February eight, because if you're gonna, if you're gonna go with the employee route, you're gonna have to get.
So the exact figure on the employee is what?
Uh, sixty-eight thousand, five hundred something, that's, but she never, but she didn't do insurance at all.
That was a ten-year employee, she was here for ten years.
Uh, I don't think you can give five, it's only have less, pretty much less, cause, cause the state. What, what is it called?
Payback fee.
There you go, cause a payback fee, I don't think you get five, not much less. Yeah, I, I don't see that, where, where the, where the, where the, where the step comes in. If you're gonna, if you're gonna do utility bills and you're gonna do funding on, and if you're gonna do payroll parts, you've gotta have a certain skill set. That skill set is not, uh, is not seventeen dollar an hour for, I mean, it's not, so. I, I don't, I don't know where you're gonna, I don't, I don't know where you're gonna, where, where you're gonna replace that on a long-term basis. Uh, or lessen that flow of money. And, and once you do that, I don't know how you convince the next person not to have, uh, help them, I mean.
Well, and the one thing that we did benefit with, with Lindsay is she didn't go anywhere. Most towns our size are just a year until I get the next one. So I don't think we would have great ability to retain, uh, to retain that, that employee of that skill set that she has. Cause that person is going on to the next town as soon as they're able. Uh, someone who isn't gonna go and leaves would just be a lesser skill set or not the skill set that we're, would, we would need.
Well, that's the thing too, you could spend a lot of time training somebody and they leave you in six months, you never know.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, that, that, that happened like three times in a row, you know, for the last, uh, five, five years. But there were, there were people that it paid a minimum wage, they got, they got to the point to where they could kill you, kill you, I mean, you, you, uh, you think, you, you think, you kind of take all numbers for the sewer prestations. All, if, if, if we hired, if the city of Kansas hired somebody for eighteen dollars an hour, they're gonna be over the city of the store, the city of the yard, the city of the plane, they get thirty-four dollars an hour in six months. I mean, because the skill set that you get here is the s- is the same thing. Utility bills, the utility bills, they're gonna be, you have to go through the same process and the same, the cost payable or the cost payable. And once you have, once you have that, uh, it's marketable skill that, uh, that somebody else is gonna be, something like this, so.
I can tell you, in a neighboring town our size, I just asked the assistant city clerk, it's eighteen an hour. And she's full-time.
She gets health benefits?
Yeah.
She gets health benefits, I heard. Health, you know, right now, even single health benefits, they're like four hundred fifty, four hundred fifty a month.
Yep.
So, six thousand a year, eighteen by under, and it's twenty, twenty-two. Twenty-five, forty-six, plus the five hundred. Fifty-two thousand dollars an hour, and right now, I got fifteen dollars an hour. About. No, no. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
But, so for fifty, for, for fifty-six thousand dollars, you can get two hours. So, I actually could pay an answering service.
My motion's still out there?
Yes, uh, one, one thing that I, I would say with that is, if, if we only go until that date, that would only give us basically one cycle of this. Now, I'm not sure if one cycle is enough, probably, I don't know.
That's what I was wondering too, maybe we should keep it at the May one, just to give us a little more time?
I'm good with how.
To see how it works?
I think so too.
So are we amending the mo- the motion?
Yeah, I amended the motion, but I.
Oh. We're just to approve this as it's presented?
Yes, approve as presented on a, what, four month?
Okay, if you have to go January eighteen, two thousand twenty-one, it's the main thing for which.
Okay, yeah. Approve it as presented.
Okay, all right, okay, folks, can you say it?
Oh.
All right, we got a little, second, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
At the same time. All right.
Sorry, laughing.
No, it's, it's a good, that's fine. All right. Okay, covered it, and there, and then, what, what, uh, it should have gone out there tonight, it might change. Well, yeah, I got a couple, uh, the rest, those are all the policies that are in there, that depending on what committee you're on, that would be what you're gonna have to follow. I did have, I got your email addresses there, and the only other things I have, E D N, are some financial things, um. I'll give you the budget and all that kind of stuff next time, but, but, well, we can figure out a meeting calendar or whatever here. I think you're gonna need a meeting, uh, here in a couple weeks, and I'm gonna have to see, see if that, um, company from, um, the, uh, the, the fire company, I'll, I'll check here. I think you want, I think early on, we talked about wanting to get, get the schools looking forward with, uh, something, if they can get a representative here there early.
They're not gonna be doing the cash flow since last, after they hired their new superintendent.
Okay, so also that's our, 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 our plan. Okay, so that, I will get the water guy here, the guy from, um, Randy brought up a couple weeks, or maybe you go, or maybe two weeks ago already, about, uh, the water quality. And we're having our people that do that for us, a management team, they're doing analysis of the water again right now. Uh, seeing if there is definitely a modification, they should definitely get this support, we should have, we should have an idea of what our water system is, how it's, probably set up, ready to come here in two weeks, and, somebody else. So there'll be a, oh yeah, that's what we hear from our. Yeah, we just did fund, we just did funding for this sewer project, so right now we've got quite a bit of money. Uh, one point four million is what we got in checking, our checking, savings, whatever, right now. We got a little going in here on the water tower, stuff that hasn't been done, there's about six thousand dollars worth of stuff that need, need done yet. So when I finish up today, actually, the current amount is one million and five ninety-nine, zero, zero, a little bit more. The last worksheet that I got in here, um, a couple of references with Paul was talking about. This is where, so that he has been pretty much the same for, uh, the last seven or eight years. Uh, this would be your overall five thirty-seven is kind of been made number that's been staying at. Looks like now you look on the bottom, five thirty-seven should be good until two thousand twenty-four. Then, then it would drop down onto the three forty, ten, forty-one dollars after some bond pay off. But then you have to decide, um, your, uh, your split, it might end up being gone by then too, so that's kind of.
And that's the year we'll probably go on for nineteen, when they come through. And twenty-two.
Yeah, we gotta do that E D A, sixes and cycles. So that's, that's kind of what that flip of the stuff is, this next one, uh, getting laid and these questions, how this all worked, we got, we talked about here in the last couple years. This is the cash flow for our, for our, uh, revenue bond. How, how we give, up a while, a little off time ago, we ended up doing all of our way forward, working cities. And, uh, the group negotiated to take that back, bring it over to the city again. What we found out over time was that, uh, there was, there was a something made when city person sat over there, that it was gonna, it was gonna end up being between fifteen, twenty percent of flow in, for, for that money. It turned out that it was anywhere between two and five percent, depending on wherever. So I think the real, that's the biggest realization was they are wanting us to, we get these capacities and go from there. Sewer needed that capacity more than we did, and they, they seemed to realize that as time went on. Uh, they really didn't want Henderson in as part of the partnership. State people, after kind of figuring out what's going on, realized that whether they screwed us or we screwed ourselves, or we did whatever, we bonded for way too much money as part of our share of that project. So that it's, that, we basically bonded for twenty percent of the project and we really owe them five percent. So what we negotiated out was, we, state couldn't reissue a bond, but they allowed us to get out of the agreement with the sewer and, uh, and basically, you know, sewer is paying off our share, Henderson's share of that bond. So that amount is about two hundred and thirty to two hundred and forty thousand dollars a year. So what the city did last year, would decide to take some of that. Right now, our making, the city, the sewer is, we paying them for so much per thousand gallons. Uh, the average, the average kept going up, 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 we started on a hundred and fifty-six, and went to a hundred and ninety, and then to twenty, and by the end of two thousand and eighteen, we were at like two hundred and twenty-five thousand gallons average per day that we were pumping over to the city, couple sewers. Uh, with what we've done so far, and I realize the dry year and food, whatever, we're down to sixty-one thousand gallons. And we've, uh, we've, we've taken our average numbers and not been down by four. At the same time, we still got a main that we haven't, uh, totally disconnected yet, so that, uh, but we're getting closer, closer to, it's probably about fifty-five thousand gallons, we always pump out of water. So we're probably not gonna get too much lower than a little fifty, but we're, we're getting down there, but that's important, is that we end up, if we get over that hundred and sixty-six thousand gallons a day, then we end up needing penalties now for something. So, uh, the, the idea is, the city council came up, was was they would use that money to write down the cost of that project. Uh, but didn't use it all, I mean, uh, we had the, the two hundred and some thousand, the new bond, and we just used tied to about a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar bond, and so there's, there's still, there's still some, uh, some, some, some excess capacity left in there, and that's what this is trying to, trying to show. And for the first two years, there is a lot of excess capacity in there, because, uh, when we did get that in two thousand, and we redid the whole process in two thousand and eighteen, we were cash flowing, so we had to go to the local bank, get a quick note, we did a six hundred and eighteen thousand dollar bond. Basically, we got three years to pay off, so that we could get a cash flow and make the project, whatever, all work, so. Uh, when we refinanced, now we refinanced that six hundred and eighteen thousand, we paid off, what we spoke to get off in February this year, we gave one payment now. The local bank, of course, likes our money, uh, we got, we've got enough money to pay the whole other two years out, but, uh, uh, they don't have an early out on it, they want the interest for the next year. So basically, we gotta keep, we're keep, we got, we keep, we've got that money after to pay that off in two years. But at the same time, we, we're not using that two hundred and thirty thousand dollars to, to take down this new bond until we pay a whole thousand and twenty-three, two thousand, oh yeah, two thousand and twenty-four. You know, so then after two thousand and twenty-four, that's, that's levy sheet, whatever, then, then you should eventually be free and clear.
How do you set up a loan where you can't pay it off early?
That's how you get off the local interest rate, they set a limited amount. That's, that's how hard the local bank is. Otherwise, they, 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 they make investments out there, based on.
So what's the interest on that?
Main, the main one?
Yeah.
Two and a half. Like, like four, if, if the interest on the bond that we did it now is one point zero zero one. Yeah, it would be, it would be a point and a half, probably, if, but on the other end of it, if we were paying, if we were doing short-term borrowing from them, or more than two point five, we were doing short-term borrowing for four point five. I don't know so far, right now, any questions? Uh, over some ago, some other projects that are going on, um, last year, I don't know, working on, uh, storm sewer project, you have the Highland Water Fair. Just they, I think, I think we're still in that queue as far as, uh, potentially getting funding, if they ever get that going again. At the same time, she did an application for, uh, like a highway A P roadside partnership project, do some planting and whatever there. I haven't heard anything back from them yet through two thousand twenty-one, and, uh, we've got some, we've got, uh, code. We reached out and find out Henderson City Code, that got sent out to, we believe, to some city, we expect to be getting that there sometime, early, early, late winter, early spring.
So she didn't have that finalized with the deal out here on nineteen for the planting, uh?
I have never, I have never seen anything. There's a, spoke to a roadside partnership person, but.
Nobody's came around or.
I've never seen, Robin calls, whoever, that, that person exists, I mean, when you go online, that name is there, and that's their, that's, that's their job. But, uh, whether they're actually doing projects, when they, whether they're actually doing projects, they pull that or not, right? We don't know.
Well, that's another issue, everything's behind.
Yeah, so, I'm, I'm assuming if she said that we're in, we're in their keys to do something, when they get around to us, they're gonna get, they're gonna get hold of us, you know, so. Kind of like the same, we, we did actually get that guy to come out, you know, for the D and R, the guy that's, we're gonna get money, we're gonna break them. And again, those, for trees, the Lions Club has been really good at taking advantage of legal projects. And, uh, we, hopefully, we, they're ready to go with that in the spring, once we can get that started, they want to come on Lions Club. We still got, uh, hope to ice and a few other, few other states signed up to put out, they donated, uh, putting up to the Lions, putting up some speak night last year, and that's, they're one eighty-five percent.
Well, speaking of, stepping back ways, but on the snowboard, do we have trucks hauling signs?
For the honey, honey, I've got whatever, I'm gonna make sure it's done.
Really should be.
If, if we do, if we do, they're still holding in the back of whatever that I. Okay, all right, last thing is, uh, the body's meeting schedule, so I'll be looking for books on that. What do you?
I don't have it.
We have some suggestions on the fire provisions. Uh, she said that they're, you know, that's, that's, uh, the town, the market, oh.
What are you asking for?
Fire provision, I don't.
Well, I think, because we were, I didn't realize this meeting was tonight, we were thinking the fourth Monday, because of Mark Luther King being the third Monday. That would give the townships time to do their appointments.
That works for me.
Yeah. What time is this at?
It's seven thirty.
This is one of the last pages in the.
Oh, okay.
Please, yeah.
And I don't, I don't know who any of the township appointments are.
I'm talking about, you know, Steve on the tour, about when you're around, you'll figure out. You say you need to meet or want to meet?
So Amy, you're on bills with me?
Yes.
Um, Lon will send out a text message saying bills are ready to review.
Okay.
I don't know if you wanna do that together the first time?
Probably with you.
Okay.
If you believe we've done it before the needs, you know, but, uh, that works like fifty five or something. David, you're gonna work with the roots, you're talking, we're gonna figure out that show.
Yeah.
And utility, utility stuff, we have it.
Do we need to sign this one too, or what was that one?
Uh, what is that?
Social media policy.
I looked at interest and then there was another.
Looked at my oil, I don't know, we can all, we. I was ranked by.
He's right after us. Yeah.
All right, I'll be looking for most under five being scheduled. We'd like to have you.
So move.
All right. Can you say it? Can you say aye?
Aye.
Uh, you're gonna sit, you're gonna, hey, you're right on. Uh, all right, we look for most here.
Make motion.
I go with you second.
Second.
Go with second, can you say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We are, hey.